Good afternoon and welcome to the Public Safety and Government Operation, Public Safety Committee. I'm so used to saying it, there's no more government operations. I'm Mark Conway, Chair of the Committee and Representative of the 4th District. Today, the Committee will hear LO 25-0006 Baltimore City Fire Department and Emergency Medical Services Operations and Oversight. This is going to be the first of quarterly meetings with the Fire Department as we had done in the last term to make sure we're staying on top of things and where the Council can be aware or made aware of issues and opportunities to collaborate, we will do so. In attendance today, we have, of course, myself, Chair of the Committee, Councilman Blanchard representing the 11th District, Councilman Gray representing the 8th District, and Councilwoman Ramos representing the 14th District, visiting for the first meeting today. Thank you for coming, Councilwoman. Representing the Office of the President, I do not see representation here. And representing the Mayor's Office, I've got Ty Lawrence. So Bill LO 25-0006 Baltimore City Fire Department and Emergency Medical Services Operations and Oversight for the purpose of inviting representatives of the Fire Department, the Office of Emergency Management, 911 Call Center, and Emergency Medical Services EMS to discuss their operations, apparatus, equipment, hiring, training, and safety. This bill was introduced on January 27, 2025, sponsored by myself, and we can jump right into it. I'm going to hand off to you, Chief, and we'll go from there.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon, sir. Good afternoon, members of the Committee. Chief James Wallace, Chief of the Baltimore City Fire Department. As I usually do, I have key members of my command staff here today who will, they will brief out individually in some of their areas of expertise. We will go ahead and jump right into it.
Before you jump in, I just want to give new members to the Committee just an insight on how we tend to flow through here. These presentations move section by section, and so what I'll afford is if there are questions throughout the presentation, please just catch my attention. We'll make sure that we acknowledge you to give you an opportunity to ask those questions, and we'll go from there. So Chief, please.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Also for the Committee, the first half of the briefing will focus specifically on fire suppression and support services such as fire prevention, some of the other areas, and then we'll transition over to EMS on the second half. So we'll jump right into it. So I want to start off with an update on the apparatus that we currently have on order. So as we usually do, we like to brief the Committee on where we are with regard to apparatus. As you're aware, over the past couple of years, apparatus has been a challenge post-COVID. It's been a challenge working with our vendors to, for timely delivery, I guess, of apparatus. So this particular slide, what I'll draw your attention to is the red font where you see numbers preceded by dates. This apparatus has already been delivered. So we have recently taken delivery of a sizable amount of medic units. Mr. Chair, as you'll recall, that's been a challenge for us. We believe now that that pipeline has recently, at least stabilized somewhat and has opened up. Members of the Apparatus Committee are actually in Wisconsin as we speak, doing final inspection on a number of fire apparatus. So we believe by the end of the calendar year this year, we're going to take delivery of upwards of eight engines and an additional sizable amount of medic units. So I think right now, we're, as a department, we're in a favorable place with what we're able to forecast. It does appear recently, the forecasted arrival dates from the vendors, they have kind of been held to their word. So I'm optimistic that that's in itself is stabilizing. The final thing I'll draw your attention to is we do believe one of the fire rescue boats that we have on order, we're on course right now to have that delivered this year as well. So as you know, our Marine Operations Fleet is really a big part of our Fire Department, and we've really embarked on a replacement plan for that. So one of our fast boats, our fire rescue boats, we think we're in a good position to have that replaced by the end of this year. Next slide. This is just a quick picture for the Committee's benefit. On the right are all the new medic units. One of the new engines with a medic unit on the left, that's at a dealer location down in and around the county. These are our electric vehicles. So the black pickup trucks going to OEM, that's a Ford Lightning. We're proud of the fact that we've began to transition where we can over to electric vehicles. So we want to show that. We want the community to see that. The lower right-hand picture is what's being displayed on our vehicles to show that we, in fact, are going electric. So we're very proud of that.
Chief, can I ask how that has been operationally so far as the ability for those vehicles to meet the day-to-day needs? Have you experienced any kerfuffles of sorts?
I have not. I'm not aware of any issues at all, and I have one of our logistics chiefs that's with me, Chief Taylor, if there are any problems, but I'm not aware of anything.
He's shaking his head, "No, I appreciate it." Thank you. Please, I want to make sure, you know, this is something that really championed, that if there are things that we can learn from the rollout thus far, we're still doing many, many more vehicles, that we keep those things in mind and can think about it, you know, holistically. So we appreciate it.
Thank you for that. And again, we're proud of that. That's a big achievement for us. So a quick update as we usually do on station renovations and construction. Engine 14, we ran into a little bit of a glitch with the permitting process. There were the many splits that were on the roof. That particular proposal was denied, and as such, what that resulted in, those having to be moved to the back of the building, which causes some issues with permits and wiring and things like that. So we're working through that. Otherwise, that project is well on its way. Engine 27 on Minnesota Avenue, that project came in way over what we were budgeted for and the amount of money that we had. We're taking a position of fiscal responsibility with this. Instead of a complete demolition of the building, we've taken a step back, and we've really identified what do we need? What does the community need over there? How can we achieve that for the 7.5 million that's been granted to us? So that project, again, is moving forward favorably. However, it will not have the look, as we've briefed the Council and the Committee on in the past, of a new building because, you know, financially, it's not achievable at this point. But we do have some good plans for that building. Engine 31, they're going to begin the HVAC upgrade in the spring to that firehouse. That will be followed later on in either late spring or into early summer with the bathroom renovations for both the officer of the house as well as the members, and then finally, the kitchen renovation as well. They have, Chief Goode and his team have fast-tracked and prioritized HVAC in that firehouse, you know, in advance of summertime heat. Next slide. So these are the ESPP-funded projects. We have briefed out on this before. A lot of the mission with this funding is to achieve lead abatement. We want to work through gender-neutral bathrooms, sleeping quarters, any type of green energy improvements that we can achieve through this. Below, Station of Engine 2, we've talked about this for quite a while now. I'm happy to report Engine 2 is back in that building. The final 1% of the project is, there are some custom windows that needed to come in. After the bay door was done, it necessitated certain windows, and I'll show that in a subsequent slide. The Station of Engine 52 up on Walbrook, or Woodbrook, excuse me, is well into the design phase. And then I'd also draw your attention to the Fireboat Pier. That is a project that we knew we had to do due to the storms we had last year and some of the tidal issues down there. That pier became compromised at a pace that was much quicker than what we anticipated, but that project is underway as well down there to restore the pier. These photos are of Engine 2 I previously mentioned. That's a completed outside look of the firehouse. It's got that traditional BCFD look to it, one that we're very proud of. The top middle slide are the new gender-neutral bunk areas. The bottom is the officer's quarters, and to the right is the renovated kitchen, all of which were ESPP-funded. So that firehouse has turned out very well. Again, we're very pleased with the work that was done there. Future projects under ESPP, as we've reported out before, Station of Engine 55 on Bush Street, as well as the Station of Engine 30. They do have start dates on both of those projects. Engine 55, we've run into a concern there with what we call the brick envelope. So the brick, the exterior brick part of the building, a lot of that needs to be repointed. There are water leaks from recent freezing and thawing there. It makes no sense to go interior until we can stop the water leak. So a bit of shift of priorities there. And then the other stations that are listed, 29, 33, 56, 57, and 36, all single houses with the exception of 29, as a medic. The challenge that we have there is a lot of those are going to require displacement of apparatus. So we don't want to embark on all those at one time because we'll be jockeying fleet all around the city. So Logistics has a roadmap, if you will, for those projects moving forward. This slide depicts the ARPA-funded facility projects that we have in the works right now. And what I would draw your attention to just overall are the station numbers beside each header. We have a lot of projects. There's a lot of work that's about to be done. There's a lot of work being done from roofs to gender bathrooms to generators. I got to say, my hat's off to my logistics team because this is a lot of coordination, but I know they're getting it done. A lot of work to be done here, some permit processes that we need to finish up with. But generally speaking, these are ARPA initiatives. So, you know, we're on a timeline for this, and we're moving forward with all of these to get these done ASAP. In addition to those, we've spoken in the past about work needing to be done at the Fire Academy. We have been able to get the boiler room opened up. They are going to need a new water heater, and there's got to be some work done to the concrete floor there. Truck 5 was another big project with a geothermal system. They pretty much have that one completed, and we're about to embark on a sizable project at the Old Town Firehouse that centers around replacing the boiler there. These are pictures, so the left-hand picture, what we are trying to show there, there's a bathroom back in that back corner right there. It's right at the top of the stairs. So this is a project that we've identified for work that needs to be done. The middle one is work that's actually being done at Engine 30. We've run into quite a configuration of electrical wiring up there in the top that we're working through. This firehouse, this is not how, this is while work's being done. This is not something that's been ongoing that we're trying to fix. This is something that they discovered. You notice the plastic drape and everything there in front, but we're having to navigate some electrical issues. And then the one on the right is a finished bathroom, I believe. That's at the Station of Engine 45, but that is, that's a finished bathroom. So, you know, just evidence that these projects are working. This project as well is a completed one. This is the Station of Engine 13 at McCullough-McMecon. The lower left was the roof as it was under demolition. Final product is on the right. Once again, an ARPA-funded project, one we're very, very happy with. I spoke about both of these. These are just pictures of the Fire Academy. That's a work in progress there. However, that's a significant improvement over what it used to be. And then Truck 5's geothermal system on the right. We've moved, as we've briefed in the past, into a program called Operative IQ. We're happy to be the only agency right now that's using this, however, one that I think we're having a lot of success out of this. This gives us the ability to track, I guess in short, our infrastructure, everything from a building to fire apparatus to turnout gear. And those bullets just indicate some of the things that we're tracking at this point. By way of example, on the right, you'll see some of the things that we're tracking, costs, expenses. I would draw your attention to the third line down under FY25, that $108,066. The significant increase that's shown over FY24, that is janitorial supplies at the Fire Academy. That number is consistent with the increase in cadets we've had at the Fire Academy. So this system tracks things down to a very granular level, and these are the items that we're tracking. But we can also show, just with EMS alone, we can show about a $600,000 savings, even though we've spoken about how inflation has affected the prices of drugs and things like that. Just by way of centralizing everything and tracking it, we're now able to show better management of our inventory. And I would add, as an example, the way the system is going to work is we're going to apply stickers to pretty much all of our apparatus. Embedded within the stickers will be a microchip. We can now move through firehouses, through our EMS inventory with a, I'll call it a price gun, like you would see on TV. They can move through and they can conduct inventory right away. The advantage for a lot of our drugs are it'll also give us the expiration dates and things like that. So we've become way more data-driven. This is just a tool to be able to show us now really a day-to-day look at what our inventory status is across the Fire Department. Again, just a slide to indicate the progression. I've kind of already talked about that one. And then as far as station inspections, so these stations are the ones that use heating oil to heat the building right now. And what we've tracked is, in the middle column, these are gallons of oil being used. And then the associated costs are to the right. What we've been able to identify is that our Station of Engine 43, and there was one more, Station of Engine 45, there are higher-use stations. So we've applied, Logistics has applied for an energy grant. What we're trying to show here is, again, this is the system that we're using to be able to show the energy efficiency of a building, and where we see these large spikes in cost to heat a building, we're now looking at the windows. We're looking at the mortar. Does it need to be repointed? Where are our gaps in the building? Why is it costing us so much money? So this is a very, very small snapshot of a very large system.
And I'm curious, these numbers, of course, these are real numbers. So this is before we've seen the rate hikes.
These are real numbers right now.
Right, but, and this is based on a year or?
This is based through this winter, I believe, and this is heating oil. So these are our actual, these are the buildings that use heating oil as a sort, an oil-fired furnace. Not all of them have. We have some that are, you know, gas, obviously, but these are our oil-fired. For the purpose of this hearing, we just wanted to show this example.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's helpful to know. Thank you.
And that'll do it.
Before we move forward, I just want to acknowledge Councilman Slifer and Councilwoman Porter, who just joined the meeting.
And I will, I'll hand it off to our 911 Director.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Tenia Reddick, the 911 Director for the City of Baltimore, along with the Director for Fire Communications. So for the call volume for 911, we received a total of 1,139,495 calls for 24, and that's not including the outgoing. So if we include the outgoing calls, that was 1,394,000 calls. Also, we answered them, 82% of the calls was answered within 15 seconds. And as of today, starting January 1, 2025, up until today, 911 has answered 144,000 calls total. Hiring events, we did a hiring event on January 21 of 2025. Out of the 75 candidates that said they would appear for the interviews, only 40 showed up, so we only interviewed 40 individuals. And we're looking to possibly hire around March, mid-March. 13 vacancies is in 911 and four vacancies in Fire Dispatch. As 911 continues to move, 911 and Fire Communications continue to move forward with our community outreach and community engagement, we allowed Patterson High School EMT public safety class to tour the 911 Center. That happened two weeks ago, along with participating in the Ruth Kirk Recreation Center, Kirk, Coat and Turkey Drive. Next slide. So if we move to Fire Communications, the total units dispatched was 350,602, which is 4% less, well, which is 0.04% less than 2023 for EMS.
One second, Councilman.
Yeah, thank you. Can you go back to the previous slide?
On the 911 calls, do you have a sense of the 18% that were not answered within the 15 seconds? Are there specific trends in windows, like when we see peaks in longer wait times and whatnot? And if you could just talk a little bit on that, that'd be helpful.
Okay, so when you talk about the peaks in longer wait times, that normally is weather or situation-based. So normally around May, between May and August is our peak time. So starting roughly around Memorial Day, we see a peak in calls. 911 calls get a little higher. So if a day we can answer between 3,000, and then in May, we can answer between 3,500 to 4,000 calls. So we can see a serious uptick between May and August, as we know, that is the warmer months. So that always means more people are outside, more events are occurring. And then also, when I say events that happens in the city, it all depends. It can be a mass shooting that occur or a serious incident where it's a fight, or if we want to recur to like Brooklyn Day, that also responds to high amount of people calling 911. So it all depends on, like I said, time, weather, events that are occurring that also offsets the uptick and rising of the 911 calls.
Got you. Thank you.
You're welcome. So back to Fire Dispatch, EMS. So we dispatched out 277,138 calls, which is a decrease of 1.30 calls from 2023. Suppression, we dispatched out 73,464 calls, which is an increase of 5.3% of the calls. Also, currently, the percentage of calls dispatched within 64 seconds, we're at 85.95%, and percentage of calls dispatched within 106 seconds is 95.17%. Thank you.
And quickly, just for clarity, the 64 seconds and 106 seconds, those are national standards or, those are national standards?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. Councilwoman Ramos, any other questions, please? Let me know. Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Director. I think you know what I'm going to ask. Just remind me how many 911 dispatchers now, or 911 operators we have that are Spanish speakers?
So we have currently not only Spanish speakers, but they also speak other non-English languages. We have a total of four, because I told you last time, five, because one retired since then. But also during the interview process, we did receive several people who also was bilingual, who spoke several different languages, from Spanish to Arabic, so.
Of the 40 that interviewed during that time? So you do have candidates that are starting to apply, and you're looking favorable on them. Okay, great. Thanks a lot. I appreciate it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Please proceed.
Good afternoon. John I, Assistant Chief of Operations. Mr. Chair, Committee members, thank you for allowing me to speak on this topic. My presentation will focus on several operational data for the calendar year 2023 and 2024. It looks at the response data, incident data, daily activities, training and inspections, and initiatives that are ongoing and new. When we speak of daily staffing for suppression, it consists of, I'll just highlight a few, consists of 32 engines, 17 trucks, three rescue squads, a heavy rescue, seven specialty units, six battalion chiefs and one shift commander. Next slide. And our units are quite busy during the shift. So not only are they doing the responses, but we also have unit activities and inspections. We responded to an average, if you look at the top, of 479 calls a day. We further broke this down into daily calls and unit responses. So we average about 285 EMS call responses for suppression units and 194 suppression call types. Some of our busiest units, engines and trucks run up to about 24, can run up to 24 calls a day, but the median for our busier units, Truck 5, Engine 13, and Engine 6 are 16 to 17 calls per shift. The graph below it shows our, the responses shows our daily activities. These inspections and daily activities are required, and each unit's responsible for these daily. They're directly tied to the city's ISO 1 classification, which, as we know, is the highest rating you can receive. And ISO is an insurance services office. It's a measurement of effectiveness of fire protection in fire districts across the country. The rating is directly tied to the homeowners' insurance premiums, which we know the higher the rating, the lower the premiums are. And again, we are at the highest classification for that. I'd like to highlight some of the information gathered during these inspections. If you look at the Monday, we have hydrant inspections. We have approximately 10,000 water hydrants in the city, and we visually inspect them twice a year. On Tuesdays, we do, and Thursdays, we do, we conduct building inspections. This is part of our pre-fire planning efforts, and suppression companies perform about 100 of them a week. On Wednesdays is our unsafe vacant surveys. We conduct visual inspections of code x-rays in unsafe vacant dwellings and re-inspections. Fridays is a catch-up day for us, gives the units opportunity to complete the inspections or activities that must be completed by the end of the week. And again, Saturdays, as you know, is a big day for us. We do home visits, we conduct home safety sweeps, install smoke alarms. We generally try to make over about 500 attempts weekly. Our units inspect and install smoke detectors, they monitor CO, and we talk about fire safety education. When we encounter someone that's not home, I'm happy to announce that this past week, we have a door hanger program, and we can pass these out, and our public information officer can talk about these. But if they're not home, we're going to leave a door hanger up and allow them the opportunity to call us back and come into a home safety inspection, install a smoke alarm. We also partner with the Red Cross on Saturdays, and I'll talk to you a little bit later about that. On Sundays is our battalion training. It's where all six battalions get together, and we operate and train on specific topics that are sent out department-wide. And as we know, in addition to these activities, we do a lot of community meetings, hands-on with CPR, rec center visits, and DC Shiloh. Deputy Chief Shiloh will speak about our daily training that we do at the Fire Academy.
Before we move forward, I want to ask a quick question about the suppression unit responses per day at 479. Is that normal? Is that high? Is that something that we should? I feel like that's a lot of stress on our fire trucks, and I'm wondering how we think about that sort of balance?
Yeah, it's, our acuity level is higher comparatively to the state numbers. And I think there are some ways educationally that we can educate when to call, you know, 911, what's appropriate. And we always find that, you know, our EMS runs, my next slide will show that our EMS runs, we back up the EMS system. So a lot of our, the majority of our responses are EMS-related, and we are actually getting there pretty quickly, and then we're actually holding on the scene until we get an EMS unit available. So multifaceted approach to try to get that down. But as we know, we're the system that backs up their system, and Chief Wallace. we're, we're the system that backs up their system, and, um, Chief Wallace, I don't know if you have any further.
Yeah, we're, the other thing we're doing right now is we're, we're starting to review some of our call determinants through nine-one-one. And where there are some lower acuity calls, um, that we may be able to hold for a little bit longer, instead of running, you know, a, a one million and one and a half million dollar piece of apparatus out there to, to stage and really, um, not necessarily provide a whole lot of, of care, we're, we're looking at being able to prioritize those calls. Um, it's, it's much more than, than reconfiguring field operations, if you will. We have to reconfigure our, our nine-one-one, uh, system, the way we, uh, dispatch calls, the way we, um, I don't want to say screen calls, but the way we, we come to certain determinants in a call. So, um, we know that we have a lot of lower acuity calls that we have apparatus standing by on, and that's something, um, working with, with the nine-one-one director, but also Chief Mads, Dr. Lawner, we're attempting to, to, to reset on how some of that happens.
Yeah, I'd be sort of very curious, like, um, because this is one number, it doesn't give us a sense of trend over time, so it just seemed high to me. I don't know, I don't know how many trucks do we have exactly, it's probably in the presentation, but, um, I'm curious to see what solutions we're looking at and, um, you know, if there, you know, just where we can intervene here so that we're, to your point, you know, not running down our more expensive vehicles.
Yes.
But yeah, thank you, I appreciate it. And, and if you guys would be willing to, or if you have something to share to that, to that end, it'd be helpful.
Yeah, we will.
Yes, you have a question?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. And to follow up to that, just to make sure I'm understanding the situation, so, so suppression, the majority of suppression unit responses are to EMS call types? So that's saying that probably, like, three out of five of the calls that suppression is responding to are, are medically related and not fire-related, and that, that is, so you're saying yes, got it? And that's to make, that's when we have a shortage of EMS and it's needing to, something's needing to respond?
Yeah, that's, that's when we're, we're, we're backing up the EMS units that aren't available, whether they're offloading at the hospital. Um, there's different reasons for that, but we know that we can, our EMS system is, is taxed, right? And we know that we can get a suppression unit there pretty quickly and under five minutes most of the time. So if we know we have a long response time, or we have units offloading and they're not available, we, we use those suppression units to close that gap.
Okay, so just to make sure I'm understanding it, so of those calls, the, the vast majority of those are just suppression is, is able to like fill in the gap and respond quicker because this is part of the whole EMS shortage situation, and is not a matter of, for some reason, a fire truck would make more sense in that situation?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I don't think they'll, when someone calls nine-one-one and they need, they need medical service, um, I don't think we'll ever run into a situation where a piece of fire apparatus is the solution. What, there, there, the call determinants, there, there are those out there. Um, there's plenty of calls where, when we don't have EMS capability available, we'll send a unit to stand by. But there are also plenty of calls out there that, um, by way of the severity of the call, we send that support with EMS as well. So, um, just as an example, cardiac arrests, right? We, we're going to need at least six people to work that call, so they, they'll get a, uh, suppression unit with them. Um, gunshots, trouble breathing, unconscious, those higher acuity calls by way of, uh, the design of the system, we'll get those suppression units as well. Um, it's that lower acuity, that lower end, that we're trying to work through. Um, I don't know that we'll ever eliminate it, but I think that there are ways that we could reduce it, we could bring, bring that down, um.
So the goal is for suppression to not be involved in low-acuity EMS calls?
That's a goal. Um, what I would say is, it's a goal without, it, it should be, it should be known as a goal without an immediate solution.
Sure.
Because there are, there are certain things that, um, through some of the dispatch programs that we use, require us to do certain things, and I think that's why we've, um, and this, this is not new, this is something we've been looking at now, um, over the past year, trying to figure out, you know, because that's, that, that's dicey, right? You, you're relying on what a caller's telling you, and you're sending that resource, and, but what if we miss? Right? So that's, that's where that decision, reaching that kind of sweet spot, it's, it's not an obvious place, so, um, but it's definitely one that we're looking at, working on.
Thank you, Chief.
And I, I think I would also suggest, sort of hearing this back and forth, is, um, I, I'm, I'm curious if we're burning through our fire trucks at a rate more quickly than we expect, uh, and if so, I think maybe that might be a more manageable, like, of course, we're going to need, um, the backup from suppression units in order to help fill in the gap. Um, we, we just don't have enough of really anything, people, money, so it, that is the reality, and so we need that, that ability. The question is, how much does it sort of tax our infrastructure, our, our apparatus? Um, and how can we, how can we rebalance so it doesn't tax it at a rate that is, um, unnecessary, um, or beyond a certain point? Essentially, if we are using our, um, our fire trucks too often to respond to EMS calls, and it kind of burns out our fire trucks, and we need to buy more, and they're very, very expensive and expensive to maintain, um, that's a problem. But if it's only a marginal increase in, you know, their utility, uh, and it helps to fill a gap, by all means, I don't think it's as big of a problem. Does that make sense? Yeah. So I'll look forward to any follow-up you guys can provide on that, on that end. Thank you.
Yes, sir, thanks for the question. Uh, this, this is kind of a breakdown of our total responses for suppression units. You can see, as you stated, we are consistently busy throughout the year. This just breaks down the calendar year twenty-three versus the calendar year twenty-four. The suppression responses are in the orange, and then the suppression responses to EMS incidents is in the blue. Next slide. We broke down our suppression responses by council district, uh, from twenty-three to twenty-four. We highlighted the top three districts with the highest call volume. For calendar year twenty-four, District Eleven had twenty-two thousand, five hundred and ninety responses, uh, District Twelve had over seventeen thousand, and District Nine had fifteen thousand. They were the top three. Next slide. This slide, um, it looks, it looks a little bit boring, but it, it actually says a lot. The bar graph, uh, is showing the time that at first engine goes en route to the time they get on the scene of a structure fire. Uh, NFPA standard seventeen-ten is four minutes, and our average is three minutes and eight seconds, so we're close to a minute under the standard. Um, it shows our consistency with our members turning out quickly, um, responding quickly, um, in addition to using the AVL to dispatch our closest units, and our battalion chiefs and shift commanders that identifying gaps when we do have incidents to pull other units into those areas. Next slide. Structure fires, uh, these are some complex incidents, and, uh, we need to make immediate decisions when we get to these, so I just want to talk a little bit about these. They are our biggest challenge from the life safety perspective for fire department members and incident stabilization, um, during uncontrolled incidences. So protecting citizens' lives and property, and I will say that under Chief Wallace's term, we've put a lot of policy and procedures in place to ensure, uh, that we do safe and efficient operations, um, at, at these incidents. And I give a lot of credit to our members and instant commanders and the leadership for the, um, progress in lowering, you know, firefighter injuries and burns, um, which we'll further talk about. Next slide. Slide showing a structure fires, uh, the numbers are pulled from our fire reporting system, determines the structure status at the time of the fire. Overall, we had a reduction in twenty-four from, uh, we had twenty, we, seven hundred and fifty-nine in twenty-three, down to seven hundred and twenty-eight structure fires in twenty-four, which is a four point one percent reduction. The numbers that most concern me in operations and our incident commanders are the vacant Codex structures. Uh, they challenged the department, but like I said, we updated the, uh, policy and procedures, and we continue to do that, uh, to make the best, you know, decision for conducting interior operations at these structures, especially knowing that we often encounter, uh, people inside. We remain exterior on all Codex structures unless there's a credible and viable rescue that we know we can make. And we've updated our vacant policy and procedures, uh, that intends to change a little bit to slow the culture down, uh, to fully evaluate the risk and the benefit analysis, and we have to have a three-sixty analysis of the entire structure before we, we actually make entry.
Got a question.
Yes, sir.
To that, to that end, if we can go back to that slide, um, for, we, we've talked a lot about this in the committee in the past, but with regard to fires in vacant homes, I mean, I, I always sort of presume there needs to sort of be some impetus, someone needs to start a fire, fires don't just happen mostly. I'm curious how many of the fires in vacant homes are a result of folks living in those vacant homes? Do we have any insight on that, and?
We do, yes, sir. We, um, we find we, we encounter people inside of a vacant or Codex about thirty-two percent of the time, based off some of the initiatives that we recently started. And, and, and to your point, you can mostly say that if there's a fire in a vacant structure, there was someone in there, because most of the vacant structures have been disconnected from power and things that we normally would see cause fire. So we have to assume when we're getting alerted to these and we see that they are vacant or Codex that they had had a person in there.
Uh, and it, it makes me sort of wonder, um, from another perspective, if there's ways that we can help folks that are living in vacant homes? I know that sounds crazy, but, um, if, if it could mean that we, we save lives and prevent homes from burning down, and certainly relieve some of the pressure on the fire department, especially during cold days like today. Just something kind of.
Yes, sir, yeah, we, we've really thought about this, and I, I think you challenged me about a year ago to find out numbers of where, you know, how many people we encounter. So we started a, a pretty robust three-one-one notification program, which I'll talk about a little bit, to identify squatters, wrap around services, and share our information, and that just, that went live, um, a couple months ago.
Awesome, I'll get out of your way then, go for it.
Thank you. The, uh, next slide is, uh, structure fire in test zones. We know that these test zones, one through five, um, they have a high potential for call volume, and our efforts through safety sweeps, um, inspections and, and public educated, education has resulted in about a thirty-two point seven decrease in overall structure fires from twenty-three to twenty-four. And, um, that's just kind of showing, uh, the progress in, in these zones. Next slide. Structure fires by alarm, uh, when you hear how many alarms did echo, this kind of breaks down our structure fires by those alarms, uh, AF, meaning that an actual fire occurred, uh, when the unit, uh, arrived, and extinguishment. We had five hundred and thirty of them in twenty-four, it's down from five hundred and fifty in twenty-three. We had eighty working fires, that's when instant commander had to request additional help outside the normal assignment. And you can see AL two, three, and five, that refers to multi-alarms, second, third, and fifth alarms, and it indicates additional units are usually needed due to, um, increased fire extension that can't be controlled by the, the current units on the scene. Overall, uh, the structure fires have decreased, uh, by seven point four percent from twenty-three to twenty-four. Next slide. So our operational inspections, uh, all of our activities, inspections and training, uh, again, it, it relates to the ISO one rating, go into a fire records program, and the data is collected for all the units and shifts. Next slide. This is the, uh, dashboard, uh, that we currently have for the twenty twenty-four data points, and I'll just highlight a few. Our units have conducted over fifty-nine thousand total inspections. On the right side, it shows twenty twenty-three versus twenty twenty-four total inspections completed, and we have, uh, about a fourteen percent increase. We've ins, we've inspected over forty-four thousand alarms, and this is an important number, we've installed about seven thousand, eight hundred and eight smoke alarms in twenty-twenty-four. If you look to the right, you'll see some bar graphs, and, uh, they're indicative of the test zones, and it tracks our inspections, and you can see there's a slight increase in test zone number five, and this is typically due to, um, we know last year we had several significant incidents in that area, and we push more of our resources, the Red Cross, and fire safety sweeps in those zones. Next slide. Here's our Codex and vacant initiative, that, this is an ongoing, uh, initiative, I just wanted to give you an update on that. Next slide. We currently, uh, in our system have five thousand, two hundred and thirty Codex addresses in the system. Uh, when you're comparing twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four, uh, the new Codex is being identified, uh, we went in twenty-four to one thousand, three hundred and eight, and that's about a fifty-eight percent reduction from the year before. And we know as the program continues, we're going to see a reduction because our units are identifying these Codex addresses. And currently, what we're trying to do is we saturated a lot of the test zone areas where we know, uh, most of our fires were occurring, and we're going off of housing data to go to the outskirts to look at the vacant housing data, to see if any of those, uh, qualify as a Codex ray. And I'll say in twenty twenty-four, we do reinspection of these, uh, and you can look down to the, uh, the numbers below that we had, uh, sixty-eight raised and a hundred and seventy-nine returned to normal use. That was for both vacant and Codex ray, uh, inspections. And I'd just like to thank, uh, the mayor, you know, the city council, and all the other agencies that helped us, uh, navigate through, um, you know, getting these out of the city so it's safer for us to, um, you know, do our firefighting, um, and we don't have to do that in them. Next slide. Here's the, uh, the three-one-one notification for illegal activity, uh, in occupied structures. Um, like I said, we know from our data about thirty percent, thirty-two percent of the vacant structure fires are Codex ray fires, we encounter people inside them on our arrival. And, and we know that, and oftentimes, when a fire occurs, um, in a vacant or Codex, it likely had persons inside. Next slide. Um, this was a new initiative, uh, we had, we, we went through a couple of different models, and we went live in September twenty-eight, twenty twenty-four in the three-one-one reporting system. We develop a reporting procedure after meeting with the three-one-one administrators, not only for our units, but it's also for the public to use, also to report this activity. We put out a policy in October, um, or, or, or five twenty-four for our units to follow, and we developed a QR code, which you can see to the right, that our units use to report these. We wanted to make sure that the data was shared with other city agencies, so we have given, uh, BPD, DPW, Housing, Homeless Services, they can actually, actually, uh, access this dashboard, uh, live, and when we enter that, they will be able to see it next morning at zero seven hundred hours. That helps them get the right resources to the occupants, and we find that we can wrap around services for, once they are addressed, boarding and making sure, what we typically find, the boards are, are, are pulled down, um, and we can just do the wrap-around service with Homeless Services, Department of Housing with owner, um, information, uh, DPW for boarding, and our community risk reduction, we just kind of, Chief Wallace has just kind of put that on them to have that wraparound services. But all those agencies have access to this and have, through our IT, have, have, have been notified that they can view this.
Awesome, thank you, Councilman Porter.
Thank you. Um, can you speak to how you collaborate with the council's offices? Um, I know that three-one-one is the main operator, but, um, I believe it was a few, few months ago, um, during the budget cycle, I had asked about how you're collaborating with the council's offices related to vacant properties. I know many people sometimes don't use the three-one-one, they send emails, and it would just be helpful for us as we kind of track these issues within the district, to have some sort of connection to the council's offices. I know you mentioned a dashboard, is there an opportunity for council members to get access to that dashboard?
It's, it's, yes.
Okay.
That is possible.
Okay, thank you.
So the bottom left-hand question kind of shows, uh, and we So the bottom left hand question kind of shows, and we've redeveloped these these questions for to be answered, but it it basically asks, you know, what type of incident was encountered? How many people were in there? Was there any injuries or fatalities as boarding required? And then it gives you kind of a box to for for description other than what is asked there. Next slide. This is kind of how the platform looks. It's data that's captured by our IT department, and then it the the total squatters that we have seen through our system since it started, we've identified 116 through BCFD only. And then the BCFD units reported that there were 16 injuries, and most likely that's when we encountered these these individuals at a fire scene. Next slide. Couple other things we're doing for public awareness and outreach. The PIO is actively engaged in social media campaigns. We do have a door hanger for the 311 notification for the legal activity. And again, that that's 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 another QR code that's given when we've when we see a lot of vacancies and we see that activity, we can leave these in in the block just so residents understand how the proper way to report it through the system. And then.
If I might ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Can you walk me through what what happened? So we we get the request that comes in that someone's in a building illegally, someone squatting in a vacant building or otherwise. What happens next? What do we do today?
Okay, so we respond, we 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 encounter a fire, we encounter there was people living in there. We enter that into the system. The system generates a report, which is it pops up at 7 o'clock the next morning. Our community risk reduction is currently developing a policy for to the wraparound services right now. We just ask for reboarding of it. And then we expect that the information that we share with the other agencies, that they have access to the dashboard, and they have responded and and understand that our community risk reduction is the point for that. And that's kind of the wraparound services that we're that we're currently developing and in the in the process of.
So one of the, I'm sure we reach out to MOHS, Homeless Services. I know they have a significant backlog and certainly not enough beds or or places places for folks to find shelter. I'm curious if, you know, there is knowing that there's a problem, and and then I think there is having the resources to address the problem. And I'm curious if we have the resources to address the problem. This is not, this is not something for you to resolve, but I think this is a sort of question for the administration as we think about this dashboard and when we find folks that are living in vacant buildings or otherwise. But I would imagine eventually we send them to MOHS. MOHS certainly does not have enough beds. I know they don't because every time I call them, they're scrambling and we're trying to figure it out together. So one of the questions I have is, how can we make sure that the next step in this pipeline is sufficiently resourced to meet the challenge that we have here? Is that clear?
Got it. And so essentially to hand off from the fire department to MOHS or what other resource provider?
Exactly. And I think we want to make sure, given that we're now collecting this data, that we can predict to some degree how often this happens and how much of said resource, that being beds or some place for folks to live temporarily, we would need to sort of meet that challenge. And I'm sure we have that number somewhere, but you know, knowing that these often result in fires in vacant homes and any number of other issues that, you know, we know what happens in vacant homes, I want to make sure that we try to help people as much as possible.
Okay. Yeah, I'll connect with Chief Wallace and Director Simmons, and and we can follow up by the time of the next oversight here.
Okay, thank you. Please continue.
Thank you, sir. Next slide. I'm just going to hit on a quick initiative. I'll go through this quick with the Red Cross that we currently are in the process of working to update our MOU. We we partner with the Red Cross for home safety inspections. They they provide smoke alarms to the city, and we do inspection with them each month. We do it on a third Saturday of the month. And there's quarterly events that we participate with them, which are much larger, which involves a lot of city agencies and the Red Cross along with our units. And then this year, we have developed some multilingual handouts, and we'll go to the next slide. And these are the handouts for not only tracking the smoke detector use forms, but also fire education safety materials that are being handed out. And we identified these as the top six language for Baltimore City. Next slide. Just going to go over some significant incidents, just to to highlight for today that were affected well on our members in the in the city itself. Baltimore Peninsula Fire at 2500 Peninsula Drive. It was reported on January 13, 2025 at 1000 hours. It was a four-story townhouse, townhouse under construction. It had heavy fire conditions on all four floors. Our units decided to do an exterior attack, which was the best chance to stop the spread due to a large volume of fire, and it has lightweight construction in in that building, which quickly fails, and we saw that. Next slide. There was a, the fire was actually contained to the original units involved when they arrived. The involvement is what you see is what what they arrived, and we and we held it and checked there. We typically see more significant fire spread in these structures, often leading to complete destruction of these structures. Our members, the incident commanders, follow our policy and procedures, and I give them credit for making quick tactical decisions to put this out quickly. But most importantly, I'm going to point out that a lot of these multi-alarm things, we're pulling more members in, going through rehab, and just like most of our additional alarms, there was, there's no injuries to our members or the civilians. And also want to give credit to Fire Commander Eames. He's pretty adamant about fire plans, and he, these, these, these buildings themselves show a good example of what a good plans reviewer does for us. They have fire stops in them at different levels to, you know, to stop the the fire spread. Next incident. As you all know, Camp Small, I don't have to highlight this very much. We've heard a lot about it, and I just want to acknowledge on December 5, 5:17 PM, our units from dispatch 1900 brand. It was a wood clay, wood waste collection yard. Our units face, you know, pretty significant wind-driven fire and low temperatures with multiple critical infrastructure exposures. And our op, our units operated for 98 hours across four days. Next slide. Things to point out, there was no damage to the critical infrastructures or buildings. And then more, most important again, no fire department injuries and no civilian injuries. This is a complex, long incident that involved multi-entities and jurisdictions, and I'd like to give our Fire Communications Bureau credit too. They were, they were coordinating a lot of units from outside agencies coming in and covering the city. And I'd I'd finally like to thank the council and and Councilwoman Middleton for the the efforts of recognizing us with the resolution. That went a long way, and I just want to let you know that we we appreciate that. So my next slide, operational progression. This is kind of how we are evaluating how to be better operationally. We want to drive training by evaluating our preparedness, response and mitigation, you know, through the incidents that we're looking at. Along with sharing information, we have some surrounding partners that we're collaborating with, and then we put it in an evaluation tool. Next slide. So our operational partners, we've been in contact with Washington DC to build a relationship and share some information with departments that's similar to ours in not only members, but also demographics. We're looking at the best practices and training tactics. And then the final stages, what we're currently developing is like some final stages in like a ride along program. So both of our our chief officers can go down there and their chief officer come up here and kind of share information, which we've learned, when you were sharing ideas, you get, you get the best practices, right? The Fire Academy has offered and been very innovative, our Fire Academy in Baltimore City, in attracting outside agencies, outside states to come in and look at the training that they're currently doing. DC had reached out and asked to do this partnership, and this kind of what this, they've got the ball rolling here. We recently went down there during the full activation at their operations center during inauguration, which was was real beneficial for us for command and control and and things when we have large incidents in the city. We also recently, after our meetings with them, we did send some special operation command units and our divers down to assist with the midair collision, which their operations chiefs reached out to us pretty quickly. Next slide. And this is the final thing I wanted to go through. This is the tool which which we developed a couple of months ago. It's, it's an evaluation tool we recently placed in place to evaluate our performance. It's called an after action report. It's an internal document. It's distributed to the entire department once it's completed, and it evaluates what occurred, what was supposed to happen, what went well and why, and what can we do to improve and how? So we we provide CAD information, we provide audio to the instant commanders, and they complete the report, and then it's, it's, it's every level actually gets the comment from the shift commander to the assistant chief operations. It's not punitive. It's not intended to give, it's intended to give positive feedback and analyze our tactics and weaknesses identified. And we know when we identify something like that, that'll drive our future training. Final slide. Just like to thank each of our members for the hard work and the Public Safety Committee for the support of the department. I know our Public Information Officer has just a few comments to make on our door hanger programs that we that we are working on, and we just recently pushed out. Thank you.
How are you? Good afternoon. Our door hanger program, we.
Start, state your name for the record.
Oh, sorry, John Marsh PIO. Sorry, assume everyone knew who I was. Just kidding.
It's for the public.
Right. Our door hanger program, we've started with two initiatives, as you saw. One was for our call 311, and the other is after the fire. So we were following a bit of a page from politics of when you knock on people's doors and they're not there to leave something behind. We're following a little bit of the tools that are our political campaigns.
Actually good lessons for politics.
Right. So that was one of the pages that we have, and I also wanted to, without a slide, to speak on our new initiative that we have that is increasing our focus on plus 65 aging in place and our vulnerable residents to provide them with some outreach messaging and safety messaging. With this, we have now, we have a a relationship with the Red Cross, the American Red Cross. And from those learnings, we are now starting new collaborations with other agencies that can provide us access to these communities. So we're looking and having conversations with Meals on Wheels, AARP, and the Baltimore City Health Department with their aging services. So this is in its discovery phase of what we're doing, but right now we're looking to how do we, how do we find our aging in place, our aging in place people that are living by themselves in single-family dwellings so that we can give them safety messaging and how we can provide messaging to them? So again, this is in its discovery phase, but we're looking to be able to help save lives and and provide safety messaging with them.
So to clarify, the aging in place residents are more at risk of in the case of a fire, and they're also might be harder to to contact? Is that kind of the, I guess, what's the the chat, what's the challenge and the reason for the focus?
The challenge is we, we see that due to our either fire fatalities or or actual, you know, being on fire scenes, that when you have someone aging in place or vulnerable, having, being proactive to provide messaging to them is where are they? How do we find them? How do we speak to them? And through our, through our safety sweeps, we can recognize now, okay, we have someone living by themselves, they're 70 years old, we should probably have more safety messaging for them. We're also looking to how do we speak to the people that are their families or their people that are their caretakers? So when we partner with someone like Meals on Wheels, we'll be able to provide safety messaging almost daily to them because they're providing over 1,500 meals a day to this plus 65 community. The more safety messaging we can provide, the more we think we can help save lives and help make these these, this community safer.
Right, okay. So that it's not just it, whether they're disabled or it's not necessarily just an an age-related thing, is that?
Vulnerable, yes.
Vulnerable, okay. Awesome, thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Deputy Chief Ronald Hudgens, Fire Marshal. On this particular slide, I'm going to discuss the primary functions of the Office of the Fire Marshal. Our responsibilities are providing fire prevention, fire investigation and educational resources to the community. I will start out with the fire inspection side of it. We conduct fire inspections for new use and occupancy permits, annual operational fire permits, and to the Department of Social Services. We also conduct fire inspections for new fire protection systems, which include fire alarm, automatic sprinklers, dry and wet chemical fire suppression systems. If you look at the chart of the fire inspections in this quarter, we had 4,562. We'll go on to plan reviews. We conduct plan reviews for new buildings and fire protection systems. Plan reviews itself is up 14%. We did 614 in the last quarter. Fire safety talks and fire drills. We deliver fire safety talks and conduct fire drills. We also review special event permit applications from DHCD and DOT, as well as providing fire inspectors to cover large-scale indoor events and outdoor events such as carnivals, fairs, festivals, concerts, ravens and Oriole games, et cetera. The fire safety talks and fire drills, we did 89, which is up 69% since last quarter. And lastly, the fire investigation part of it. We are down, which is a good thing, 26% since last quarter at 102. And as of August 1, we created a special task force to include our fire investigation, Baltimore Police Department arson detectives, the ATF, Howard County K-9, and the State's Attorney's Office, and making better cases for convictions and arson crimes. This task force, we meet weekly to collaborate on all active arson cases along with closed cases. Next slide. Our arson cases are down almost 12% from 127 to 112. Thank you.
So we started over the past year, we started taking a deep dive on on how we operate on the fire ground. Chief, Chief I just briefed you a lot there, but we also started looking at a granular level, what's happening with injuries? Where are they happening? We're still in the process of of really putting that granular data to paper, but what we can say right now, this particular or last calendar year over the calendar year FY '23 or CY '23, we we saw almost a 27% reduction in in fire ground injuries. Those are just general injuries that occur on the fire ground. I attribute a lot of that to the training that that we've, we've initiated, the the new training initiatives that we have. We really are, you know, stepping up our, our, our emphasis on, you know, training the mind, evaluating the situation, the the 360-degree walkarounds of the buildings before we do entries, and then of course, the no goes on on Codexes. So I attribute a lot of this to that. The other thing that I am very comfortable attributing this with is our safety officers. We, we were fortunate in recent years to be able to get that second safety officer on shift. Prior to that, if, you know, we had a fire somewhere in the city, we had a second fire, we didn't have a a per se safety officer. The incident commander had to appoint one right on the scene. We have two now. Our safety office has become extraordinarily active. So I, as I move through these slides, I want to be, you know, real upfront with this. I think that between Chief Shiloh, Chief Knight, Chief I'd, I think that they've worked collaboratively with with best intentions in mind. So from operations to safety to training, we've been able to intertwine that. And some of the numbers that we're going. of the numbers that we're going to show you, I think, are reflective of that. But this one's fire ground injuries from '23 to '24. The next slide is, this is just quarter two of FY '24 and quarter two of FY '25. So we put this up there to show that this trend is, this is a continuing trend and this is a trend actually that is showing a more a more significant decrease. You know, those previous numbers showed years past, this is showing a quarter versus quarter. The the point here is we've upped the training, as Chief Shiloh will will talk about in her slides, we've upped it, we've maintained focus on where we think our our training is worthwhile, but we've also eliminated things that we just, you know, we we don't think at this point are relevant and we've really locked in on where we need to be on incident scenes. So I'm I'm very appreciative of all three of those chiefs and I think these numbers show their collective effort. The next slide is overall line of duty injuries. So that that's an injury that could happen anywhere. That could be a slip, trip, and fall on a firehouse. It could be, you know, somebody rolls an ankle on 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 the street, carrying a patient. There's there's no specificity to this one whatsoever, other than it's while it's on duty. This is a 12 and a half percent reduction. Again, you know, we're not tunnel vision just on these fire scenes, right, these vacant buildings. We're we're looking at this holistically and this is a number that that Chief Knight has told me in collaboration with our with our accidents, that they've never seen below 300 in both. So I can't speak to that. What I can say is I'm very pleased that the messages that are being put out are being received and generally speaking, the organization is operating in a safer manner. So I and, you know, numbers don't lie, it's it's they are doing a good job in the field.
Yeah, Chief, I just want to butt in here and just, I'm really proud of the progress that we're making here and I know we had some very difficult losses in the last couple of years and we had these discussions in this committee about what we wanted to change and how are we going to do better and it's really, really, really good to see that it's making a difference at the bottom line. So I'm proud of the work you guys have been doing and, you know, it seems that the conversations that we're having here are proven effective and, you know, we're a better department for it, so I appreciate you.
Yes, sir, thank you. And then the set, the the right hand side of the slide are, these are line of duty burn injuries to firefighters. So, you know, a significant drop here, well over 55% drop. What I want to underscore with this is a, the way our department treats burns is all of our burns to our to our personnel, irregardless of the degree severity, everything will go to the Bayview Burn Center. That isn't across the board. It is, it's not optional, it's not up for debate. None of these burn injuries, and I have one of the safety officers with me today just to verify, I don't believe any of these burn injuries were serious and resulted in any admissions to hospitals. Am I correct on that?
That's correct.
So so no overnight stay, no admissions to the hospitals. We oftentimes see see minor burn injuries, you know, an ember could get down the back of someone's coat or maybe the the area between the wristlet on the glove and turnout coat, there may be a piece of exposed skin there. So significant reduction there. Again, I attribute that to several things, obviously the three people that I that I previously mentioned, but I would also say the the shift in culture, especially, you know, we're not going in codexes anymore. We are, we're very reserved about decisions with regard to vacancies. So we're we're slowing down, we're evaluating a situation. This job's inherently dangerous. When you fight fire, burns come with it, right? But we, I think, are showing our commitment to, you know, the reduction in those type of injuries and and to our personnel. So again, very, very proud of this, as well as the last slide here, collisions have come down significantly as well. This is a trend, obviously, that we we want to to continue to show decrease and and downward trend. What I would note for this, just for your, the council's etiquette, it's a collision can be they clip a mirror, they they brush up, you know, the side of a building. This this is not indicative of a full on collision, if you will. Naturally, those do happen. You look at some of the the call volume that we have, the proportions of collisions to calls, I think are, you know, it's good, but we want to bring this down. Good trend downward. Again, the training, the training that's done in the Fire Academy, we have a new driver simulator out there. I've not done it, but I've told, been told it's the real deal. So a lot of our cadets are coming through that and, you know, the work that's done with the safety office as well here. So positive numbers, positive downward trends.
Chief, one, a question on the collision. So a challenge that we have across the city and with state data and everything, when it comes to just traffic safety and vehicle safety in general, there is not a lot of distinguishing between a clip mirror and someone with an overnight stay in a hospital. So if if there's a way just to parse out that data better of, you know, like I, a clip mirror is is not something personally I care about, something that involves someone, you know, an injury to a person or even maybe a serious injury to a, serious damage to a vehicle is clarifying those, I think, would be really helpful and because these are all fire department involved vehicles, you may actually be able to to capture that data, whereas citywide, it's really challenging.
Yes, sir. So we're, we actually are trying to work through that. The the other thing that I have the safety office working on right now, I want to analyze the intersection. Where where is this happening at, right? If we see, if we see north and I'll just throw one out there, north and Fulton, and we've had 60 accidents there during the year, we need to take a look at that, right? We need to look at, is it is it our response pattern? Is it the intersection? We're trying to go as granular as possible, down to time of day, weather conditions. But we just started that. These are, these are new things that we're looking at as well, but absolutely agree that that would be beneficial data and we will research that for you.
Well, I think that's a really great idea and I'll just offer up my chief of staff and her previous job coordinated this type of, that specific type of work in accidents and whatnot at intersections in the city when she was at Morgan State. So I'm sure she would be more than happy to procrastinate from other things by by supporting fire department efforts there.
Yes, sir. Councilman, you only have three staff, you should be very careful with their time.
Good afternoon. My name is Nikki Lewis. I am the Director of Human Resources. My first slide is going over the hiring timeline. You can see from the application, recruitment, testing, the face to face interviews, the PAT tests, all the way down to your start date, it can take up to 12 months. So one of the things that Chief Wallace has charged the Human Resources team with is trying to find ways that we can decrease that amount of time to add efficiencies to our hiring process. So what we're currently doing is doing face to face interviews along with the PAT test at the same time to help decrease that time. We're going to be able to, we kind of tested it and we're going to really roll it out with our next group that's coming in in March. Next slide, please. Also, we have, we've just started the testing, the National Testing Network. The police actually do this already, so we are going to start doing this. You can actually do your testing online, which is proctored, and you can also do it face to face. So we have actually launched the posting for this and we are starting to gather up names right now. We had the QR code that went out on all the trucks and that's been going on for at least three to four months now. We have over 1,000 names that we are going to be able to drop into that database. Next slide. This just shows through the last FY '24 hiring. What I'd like to focus here is a lot of promotions, a lot of hiring, but the September hire is the last bulletin. You'll see the EMT firefighter class. I'm sure Chief Shiloh will speak to where that class is, but 61 started, 46 are currently at the academy. Also highlight the October, we had some incumbents come through and they are released back into the field. We had 11 start there and then we also had a class that started in November and they, I'm sure Chief Shiloh will speak to that. And just to highlight, we also had a class that started the last week of January as well and there were 50 in that class. So a lot of hiring and activity going on there. This is what we're currently working on. These are our current vacancies. You can see the list there and we are fully aware of what we are working on. The numbers for the paramedics are pretty high, but we do have a plan of action for that as well. And then my last slide, it just tells the story, which is a great story to tell. You can see from 2021, where we started to where we are in 2024, that green line tells you exactly what it, what we've been doing and where we are going.
Thank you. This is very helpful. I appreciate the way you guys put it out here. After taking a couple of seconds, I see exactly what's going on here and I was curious about the paramedics. Is it, what are we, what are we seeing there? Are we seeing, is attrition high or certainly I know we're always trying to turn over and get new classes, is it more difficult to get folks, potential paramedics into classes? What are we seeing there as the sort of difference here? What's what's driving that difference?
I'm not sure if I can answer what's driving it, but I will share with you, we've kind, we've changed the way we're promoting our positions. We now use LinkedIn and Indeed, so that I think has helped drive the traffic to, but I, paramedics is a national shortage for paramedics. So it's really getting the word out, what it is that we're trying to do. Chief Wallace and Chief Matts probably could answer a little bit more because that's their area of expertise, but we are trying to change the way we recruit and the way we actually introduce what we're what we're offering as a city of Baltimore.
Yeah, I think nationally, we're about a 35% shortage nationally on average of paramedics. Those are what I would like to call specialty positions, right? Those, they're they're college level courses, they're much more advanced than what they were. Just the three of us in this front row, we're all paramedics, we have been for years, but that curriculum has changed, it's become very time consuming. As as Director Lewis said, we we went outside of just the the workday recruiting, the local recruiting, if you will, and we we right away saw, we have an applicant right now that's very interested in coming here, he's from California. Very interested in coming here, he's been very responsive to the phone calls that we have out. We saw, within a matter of days, we saw 13 applicants right away for paramedic, which is a very good sign. We also see, we we see applicants from a couple of the colleges locally, but we're also actively recruiting EMTs the same way and we saw a very similar jump in interest and applications just by expanding how we do things. Those those positions are, they're, people are hard to find that that have that training. That training is very time consuming. It's, you know, no excuses, it's not impossible, it's not insurmountable. We're going after them as aggressively as we can and, you know, right now we're in talks with at least 13 paramedics to to come here. So, you know, the the line is, you know, it it looks a bit ominous there and and I'm concerned about it as well, but I I think what they've done to kind of counteract that is showing at least a good trend.
Yeah, I, I think, so just noting that we're seeing progress, EMT firefighters and EMTs and seeing that that difference, that deficit for the paramedics concerns me as well. I think it would be helpful if we could do some analysis behind what's going on there. The drivers for us losing paramedics, are we seeing them retire more often? Are we seeing them go to other departments? Are we, you know, I I would.
Yeah, hi, good afternoon. For the record, my name is Assistant Chief James Matts, I'm the chief EMS. There's a large cross section of what's going on right now. One, we had the pandemic. I I could cite multiple stories like Chief Wallace said, it's between a 30 and 35% national shortage of paramedics. The other problem we have when they had the pandemic, I'm not going to put this all in the pandemic, but the pandemic actually cut off our feeder pools, just like doctors, nurses, and paramedics, we have a process where they'll go through school, they do ride along, they do on the job training, all that got cut off. The other problem that we noticed post pandemic is where college courses, some of our people that left here went and took over as the heads of programs like like Hartford and different counties, where we would normally have classes of 30 or 40, those classes were running, the year before last, we're running about nine students in each class. Now they're getting a little closer to 20, so they're starting to rebound slightly. So that's one of the problems. One of the other problems is years ago, we were able to train our own paramedics and with changes, different laws and so forth have changed, we can't run our own program. We have to work with an institute of higher learning. We're actually in active talks with BCCC to see if we can do that, but that's not a five minute fix. That's going to take a significant amount of negotiation and legal so forth to try to get that moving.
When did that change? When did that change?
Dr. Launer, when was that? Was it 16 maybe?
Correct, yeah. It's not uncommon, but they have to, this is Dr. Ben Launer, one of the medical directors for Baltimore City Fire Department. All paramedic programs have to be COA EMSP accredited, so it doesn't preclude that, it just means that now, as Chief Match mentioned, you need to have affiliation with an institution of higher learning, which is more rigorous training, more rigorous hiring.
Got it.
So and and then lastly, it's not really just our problem. All the major jurisdictions in this area, it's extremely competitive. I just had a meeting last week and and one of our large neighbors has over 100 vacancies in the paramedic area, 60%. It's where we would train somebody up, it gets into very reflexive, who's offering what kind of money, who's doing what kind of workload. I think we're starting to get a handle on it with a lot of the things we're doing, some of the numbers I'm seeing are pretty promising, but what I'll talk about in a few minutes when it gets to me, we have to be innovative. It's it's time to change. What we did 30 years ago is not the way stuff's going to operate now and I think it's time for us to work with what we're given and I'll talk about that a little bit when it gets to my time.
Yeah, I appreciate that and I would love to hear, we don't need to go down the rabbit hole here today, but certainly some more insight on the pressures for us losing folks, how are we losing them, where are they going when we do those exit interviews, what are they telling us? And then on the recruiting side, you know, certainly LinkedIn has helped, I guess it appeals to a a different group of folks that are more likely to be interested in the paramedic opportunities. So those pieces as well, what can we do to innovate on the recruiting and hiring side of things could be helpful, so.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, appreciate it. We can continue.
And Mr. Chair, that was committee follow up.
Yes.
Can you restate it so I can?
I'd like to understand the pressures for separations and the sort of drivers for recruiting and hiring for paramedics, so that we can figure out how to close the the gap between hired and separated paramedics for the city.
Got it. So the pressures for separation and the drivers for people who join.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the committee. Deputy Chief Laura Shiloh, I'm Director of Education and Training for the Fire Department. You can go to my first slide. This is just an overview of what we currently have out at the Fire Academy. We have right now, as of today, 105 active recruits. We have three suppression classes in, one EMS class on the 21st of February, we're going to have a joint graduation that'll put 29 people in the field, 12 of which are EMS. Those 12 EMS break down into eight EMTs and four paramedics. Go to the next one. This is just an overview year to year on how many training hours are delivered just to recruits. We've seen an increase between calendar year '23 and '24, but usually it's based on the number of classes, how large the classes are. We have to break up classes to make them more manageable and with that increase in those recruits came the the additional hours. Let me go to the next one. This is an overview of just the field training hours that are delivered year to year from '23 to '24. We also have an increase in those hours. We had increase in the class offerings, specialized trainings. So that's that's also gone up as well. Let me go to the next slide. This outlines our identified training needs. This outlines our identified training needs. We usually will find this out either from, from actual incidents, board of inquiry reports, and recommendations from the field. So this, these four that are on this particular slide, I wanted to highlight just the second one, the focus training. That's the Fire Officer Command and Simulation Program. It is a web-based officer simulation. We have our chief officers, captains, they come out to the Fire Academy and in conjunction with fire communications, they have very real life simulated incidents. And the chief officer has to run that incident virtually. And I think Chief I can attest that it has definitely made an impact on our incident commanders. They're much more comfortable with their fire ground capabilities. Can go to the next slide. These are just some additional training needs that have been identified. The optimizing human performance under stress, that has taken a look at the human factors in firefighting and in incident command. It's also gone into health and wellness, which is a little, we're not really very focused on that with the training. So that has been implemented over the last two years. It is grant funded. It's delivered by an outside vendor. We've gotten 120 members trained with that and our future officer offerings are going to be delivered by our in-house instructors in the train, the trainer format. We've been constantly putting out training manual updates and bulletins on a monthly basis so that we keep new trends fresh for the membership. We've also started with mobile training where instructors will go out to the battalions so that those units can stay in their districts more. They don't have to come all the way over to the Fire Academy. And a lot of that has been grant funded as well. We've also identified some other trainings, the shipboard firefighting, we've been in development and some collaborations with the port. A lot of this is, is also dependent on funding, which we have been also seeking out grants to try and get that delivered. Let me go to the next slide. These are additional course offerings that we teach at the academy. And then the box on the bottom have been newly developed. I have asterisks next to the Advanced Firefighter Removal Class, and I've spoken about that in the past. That is a course that our instructors have put together and developed on their own. Shortly after Stricker Street, we had a partnership with FDNY. They reached out to us and invited eight of our instructors to go up there and go through their removal school. They came back, developed a course. It's a four day course. We got grant funding for it and we've, we've put on six classes so far of 20 people. And that's continuing. We have two more that are going to be delivered this spring. You can go to the next one. So these are key points from that particular removal class. It focuses on firefighter injuries and fire fatalities, mayday events. It also goes into EMS care of injured firefighters and how to treat them when they're in full turnout gear and unconscious and removing them from a building. We've, we've had seven of them delivered. I'm sorry. It's 140 members that are trained. You can go to the next one. So this is just in paying it forward. FDNY was generous enough to reach out to us. These other jurisdictions on this slide have approached us and they've heard about what we're doing. And each one of those have come to the Fire Academy and sat in on the classes. They don't participate. They've, they've sat in on them. Baltimore County Fire Department and Milwaukee Fire Department in particular, took what they learned here back home and broke that down. And they're now delivering those programs to their departments, which is a credit to the instructors that we have. They're pretty amazing, pretty dedicated. Go to the next one. These are just some additional courses that we teach out there. It's dependent on the needs of the department. And then the last slide. That is some of the grant funding that we've gotten from the Assistance to Firefighter Grant to deliver some of this training. The Fire Academy is just, we're staffed with six permanent, full-time instructors. And we're delivering all this training with the six, the six instructors, which is an incredible testament to them with the recruit training and the field training. We use a lot of adjunct, adjunct instructors who are assigned to the field and operations, who have credentials, who will come in and will earn overtime to work out there as well as the grant funds.
Question here. Are, are we worried about this funding?
I'm sorry.
Are we worried about this funding for the future? Is there any concern that being, I think some of the?
So we, so.
I don't know if you can answer that question. I just.
Sure. And, and of course, we're always worried about funding and budget cuts. We have a pretty, a pretty good overtime budget for recruit training. We keep up within our budget for the recruit training as well as some minimal field training. These grants help us to enhance what we're already doing. We've just put in for the FY '24 AFG, which I think they're like a year behind, but we just submitted for that. Pretty confident we're going to get that as well. But in the last five years, we've been pretty successful with this particular grant.
Okay. Yeah, I would. Hopefully this isn't something we see sort of used as a football, but certainly I would just keep an eye on it.
Sure.
Okay. Well, good afternoon, Chairman Conway. Ladies and gentlemen of the City Council, just for the record, my name is James Matts. I'm the Assistant Chief EMS. I'm joined with several members of my team today, one of which is our Medical Director, Dr. Benjamin J. Loner. I have Deputy Chief Timothy Cohen. He's in charge of EMS administration as well as Deputy Chief Anissa Sawyer's EMS Operations. I just want to paint a quick background of where we're at. Baltimore City, over the last several years, we fall usually in one of the top five busiest per capita systems in the United States. On average per day, we do about 550 incidents per day and we transport about 250 people. What does that mean for us? That means that we have to be very deliberate, very data driven. As you could tell from the, the presentations earlier, we're very data driven. We try to make data driven decision making. EMS has to be in that way. What you're going to see in some of the, the following slides are, are some of the real time dashboards we've been able to evolve with over the last few years. Those dashboards evolve where we go. Just like I spoke to earlier with recruitment and retention and things of that nature, what we did 30 or 40 years ago is not going to work anymore. EMS in general has changed. It's evolved and we're going to have to evolve with that system. To that end, what we did is we placed a, a slide where we laid calendar year 23 and 24 side by side with the top five advanced life support calls as well as the top five BLS calls. Quite honestly, the call types remain consistent year over year. One of the things that is interesting is that the, the ALS calls have actually dropped slightly. The breakdown is roughly 55.1% ALS versus 44.8 BLS. It went down from the year before. Our ALS numbers were up into 61%. Something else that's interesting to note, overall, all of our ALS calls have decreased significantly. There was actually a 29% decrease in our O6 call determinant. That's like a trouble breathing, breathing problems type call to permanent. And there was also a 13% increase in our motor vehicle accidents, which is a call determinant 29. We have several of these EMS community metrics and dashboards. They're real time. Anybody wants to see them, we could just pluck in different timeframes to look at them and we're, that's what we use to judge where we're going. What's interesting to look at year over year in calendar year 23 to calendar year 24, there was actually a 4,000 call increase in the number of incidents year over year. Remember when we talk about call types, there's three major call types we have to talk about. And I know we have some new city council people in here today. There's call incidents. A call incident means there's a unique incident for every call, a response. In a call like a cardiac arrest, you could have up to four pieces apparatus. So you're going to have more responses than incidents. And then lastly, transports. That's where we actually got to go in and take people to the hospital. Year over year in calendar 23 to 24, there was actually a 4,000 call increase in incidents. Our responses went up by 6,000. Something else that's interesting to look at is those same, we also look by neighborhood. We do heat map. I look by neighborhood. Over year over year, these top five neighborhoods are still our top five busiest neighborhoods. And those are downtown Seaton Hill, Upton, Old Town Middle East, Sandtown Winchester, and then Washington Village and Pictown. One of the other metrics that we look at is we look at our median response time to sensitive calls as well as transports. It's interesting to point out that from 23 to 24, our transports actually went up by 5,000 calls. Our response time to sensitive calls went up slightly, about 10 seconds year over year, which is pretty nominal. This talks about our suppression wait time.
Chief Matts, got a question for you, Councilman.
Yep. Chief, do you have a sense of why the per capita responses in downtown are are way higher than?
Downtown. Yes, sir. And that's a very good question. Remember in the peak of the day, everybody travels into downtown Baltimore. You're going to have that influx of population, which, which floods and in turn takes up that call volume. Same time it drops down later when you get answered.
There's more people there. They're just not, we're counting resident numbers. That makes sense. Follow-on question. Then why is Upton and Dreward Heights also, just because part of that's also in my districts. I was interested to see that the 11th was a lot higher than all the other districts, right? But I see Upton and Dreward Heights as number two. Any, any sense as to what would be driving that?
Historically, those neighborhoods as well as Sandtown Winchester tend to be our highest call volume areas. As well as like Chief I was talking about earlier, Tez Zone 5, which is like your monument, Madison type corridor in East Baltimore, they tend to be our higher call volume areas. There tends to be larger incidence of overdoses. There tends to be larger incidence of, of, of trauma, of, of violence. There's a whole cascade of things that occur in those different neighborhoods, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. Councilman Schleifer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chief, do you, you were showing the chart about the neighborhoods with the highest per capita. Yeah. Is that sortable by the lowest also? Like, can you sort?
I can. I can't do it on these slides. I'd have to get back to you, but it's sorted all the way down to different neighborhoods.
Okay.
We, we look at this not just, and you got to understand, I could, I could give you death by PowerPoint in this presentation, and I don't want to do that. I think Chairman, maybe going forward, maybe ahead of time, I could send a couple of slides ahead of time. But we look at all kinds of things. We look at trauma, traffic incidents, cardiac arrests. We look at everything by neighborhood. Why? That, that tailors where we take different types of training, different types of outreach. So we look at different areas, but yes, sir, we do.
So is this, is this like on us, like on an open like system where we can actually play with it or this is internal?
This is an internal.
Gotcha. Okay. So if you can, if you can get that, if you can also provide the numbers of the lowest communities, just to, to take a look at that. The second thing also is, do you have the information about hospital wait times?
I do.
Is that one of the slides?
It's one of my slides.
Oh, okay. Yeah. Cause I was going to say I get complaints all the time from EMS in my district about the long wait times at Sina Hospital. And so I assume that that plays into, into your resources, because if you have to have EMS personnel standing in the hallways of, of Sina Hospital, waiting, waiting rooms or something, waiting for their patient to be taken, that's a burden on us that I, I just don't think is reasonable. So I'll wait till that slide.
It's, it's a great point, Councilman, but I'll actually talk about it. I talk about how long does it take us on scene? And then in turn, the trickle down is how long are we waiting at a hospital? In turn, how long is suppression waiting for us to get cleared to be able to go to that? So yeah, and I'll, I'll have, if you want, I could tell you where Sina fell last week.
Mr. Chair, if we could, could we restate the Councilman's request and then also just making it clear that these are committed requests so that I can track them?
Sure. The request is the same chart of responses to community per capita. We're, we're looking at the highest. I would like to also see the list of the lowest. Thank you.
Is that clear? Councilman Gray.
Thank you, Chair. Looking at these numbers, you guys are really into analytics and data, and I appreciate that. My question involves synergy and as far as collaboration with other departments and other agencies for accidents, for overdoses. How often are you guys checking in with the mayor, Office of Homeless Services, of DOT, that make traffic calming requests like from you guys? I think that would be, and if you could tell me that. And if not, I think it would be really helpful if we had more coordination between agencies and the data that you guys are, are using in real time. I think that would help out with a lot of issues such as like overdoses, where to send, where to send folks for outreach and where to knock on doors to give out more fire, more, you know, fire alarms, which folks are doing already. But I think if you guys are, could you just go into the details of how you guys are collaborating with the other agencies?
Yeah. And thanks for that, Councilman. And, and that's similar to the request that the chair made at the top. And I'll just add that to that, right? It is just essentially coordinating with the data that the department is collecting and sharing it out so that we can be intentional in other areas of operations. So I'll, I'll add that to that request.
And just to piggyback on the back of that, we collaborate both internally within the city of Baltimore as well as externally. But we're not going to reinvent the wheel. We learn, we can learn from best practices from our partners, from our, our neighbors all around us, around the country. So we're, we're big proponents in doing such. So sure, no problem.
If, if I could, Chief, before, as we include that in the request, I think we're looking for two related but different things here. I think my request is understanding specifically around vacant buildings, how we make sure that the handoff makes sense between the next agency in line, whether it's homeless services or otherwise, and make sure they have the resources then to meet that need and that we can then plan accordingly, budgetarily, if we have the resources. That's a whole nother problem. But then I think the Councilman's point here is, I think generally we have a huge, huge amount of data here from everyday responses that could be incredibly valuable to any number of partners. And I, I think he's maybe asking, how do we cross pollinate and make sure that others are seeing this data? And how often do we make that connection? Like where, where is that sort of happening? Does that make sense?
Got it.
Is that fair to say, Councilman?
Yes. I just want to know how often, if are, if at all, are you guys meeting to share out that data that you guys are collecting to the other agencies? And if not, if we can start doing that like on a monthly basis or quarterly or whatever helps.
Got it. Thank you. Please.
Sure. And I'm going to go through the sides, the questions. It's daily and monthly. We, we collaborate daily and monthly. So.
Yep. And I'm asking for it to be a identifier for these hearings.
Good. Excellent. And just a couple more slides and I'll get to the offload question right there, Councilman. This is just a couple of quick slides to show 23 to 24 with regard to, again, our incidents, responses, transfers, but then our median response time to, to suppression. Honestly, it's relatively flat. There's been a slight increase. I think it's like 0.2 of a minute year over year, which isn't that bad. Here's another slide where. Here's another slide where we actually look at, at offload, but I wanted to, um, slide ahead real quick to show you that, um, we track over, over offload a much closer than this dashboard. Um, what we actually do is have a nice representation here for you, Councilman. What we do is look at our, our year over year offload time. There's two ways to look at offload. We could be really nice and look at it with the median times, and I would look great if I sat here and told you the median times are the best times because it's not. We really look at about ninety percentile. Because that means ninety percent of the time, how fast am I getting people out of the hospital? In reality, and these are pretty flat year over year, it's showing about forty-five minutes. Um, it goes up and down throughout the region. I actually get a weekly report from the state where they break it down by district and so forth. And, um, actually, some of those reports actually break it down regionally like this, but I'll get into that in just a second for you. Um, one of the things, uh, that I really wanted to talk about, and I think it's important to point out, is it kinda goes back to Councilman Schleifer's point. How long does it take us? We look year over year. Our scene time, how long does it take us before we get there to where we're done? That really ranges about between fifteen to like twenty minutes usually on scene. Our hospital wait times from here, and, and by the way, this is kinda gracious, but it has us running about fifty minutes. It really runs about fifty minutes to an hour. Um, just last week, our times, um, our three worst times, um, just last week in our region, were, uh, fifty-nine minutes, sixty-seven minutes, ninetieth percentile and seventy minutes. Sinai was seventy minutes in that particular instance. Bear in mind, those times go up and down based on what kind of call volumes. Now, to be fair to the hospitals, if you notice our hospitals that are having troubles are outlier hospitals. Why? Because our outlier hospitals like Sinai or St. Agnes or down at Harbor, they're shared. Baltimore County is sharing Sinai along with some other counties. When you get to St. Agnes, you're talking Baltimore County, Howard County. When you go down south, you're dealing with other jurisdictions like Anarona County. I saw a whole bunch of questions, so I'm gonna pause right there.
They're lighting up, lighting up. They got lots of questions.
You like that where I'm reading the room? Okay.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna go to Schleifer first because I think this is, uh, in line with his initial question, then I'll go to Porter.
Yeah, so I mean, obviously, looking at these numbers, this is just unreasonable burden for these hospitals uh, to be putting on the city and the department, uh, to keep you guys waiting there for that long. Uh, why should, you know, their lack of staffing, um, create such a burden on our, on our staffing? And so, um, I would say that, uh, we should look at what it would take to just stop going to those hospitals. So a hospital like Sinai Hospital that is, uh, leaving you guys there for seventy minutes, um, that, that's not something that our resources should be going to, or it would be quicker for you guys to just get on eighty-three, go downtown to Hopkins, University of Maryland, um, something like that. And, um, instead of, of doing that, your, your overall call time and time back to the firehouse would be a lot quicker overall. So is that something you guys ever, ever consider? What would, what would have to happen in order to make that happen?
So I'll start and I'll defer to Dr. Lawner. I'm sure he has an abundance of, of knowledge to put out about that. Our offload time has made significant progress from where it was during the pandemic. We were upwards of ninety minutes at times. We've come down dramatically. The state of Maryland, meaning MIMS, our governing body, actually identified that as a problem. They put work groups together because there's a lot of laws that, that really cut down what is our extent of our responsibility when we get to hospitals. MIMS is trying to use a thirty-minute offload as, as like the best time. They've actually gone as far as to work with, in Maryland, we're kind of a unique system. Hospitals are paid through the Health Service Cost Review Commission, um, and they're actually making that a performance metric for hospitals. Where if they don't meet that, they're gonna get dinged in terms of financing and so forth. Are we where we need to be? No. Have we made a lot of progress? Yes. Do we have a lot more to go? Yes. We also have policies and procedures in place where we have a thirty, sixty, ninety policy, where at a certain point, we notify our, our leadership. Then we send EMS officers out. Then we send chiefs out. We've gone as far as taking a member and gone to the hospital and said, "Take this patient, Mr. Schleifer, to this hospital," and the hospital's getting trouble for it. It's actually easy for us sometimes to pick that person up, move them. And we've done that. I'm gonna defer and let Dr. Lawner speak a minute on that, but that's kind of where we are.
And before we do that, you, you're saying that they get dinged, uh, for, for certain amounts of times. Who dings them and, and how much is that ding? Is that like a state penalty? Who?
The, the Health Service Cost Review Commission, they actually pay the individual hospitals. They're in the process of making that a performance metric, and they will be, just like a hospital readmission penalty the hospitals have, they're working towards that direction. I don't know if that's fully operational at this point, but we're getting to that point. Also, if we redirect a patient, there's a significant, we have to file complaint with the state, which usually, what's it, a fifty thousand dollar penalty? It's about a fifty thousand dollar.
And that money would come back to the city, to the general fund?
No, I, I think the hospital is actually, the hospital is dinged by the state for that. I'm gonna defer to let Dr. Lawner speak on that piece. Go ahead.
Um, I, I know we can solve lots of things. I don't think we're to solve hospital crowding with all due respect, but as an emergency physician, I think this is a huge challenge. Um, we cannot stop going to Sinai. Sinai, for example, is a regional specialty hospital that sees ninety thousand patients per year. And the challenge is with the global budget and capacity, I can tell you from my own hospital, uh, last time I went to have a shift, there were one hundred patients in the waiting room and thirty-one patients admitted in a twenty-four-bed ED. So the challenge is we have to be a lot smarter, and I agree with you. Believe me, we need to liberate our units. And so as Chief Matt said, number one, there's a thirty, sixty, ninety degree policy. We meet all the time with MIMS and other stakeholders to bring our offload times in line with other ones in the region. Because although our obligation ends, the fact is, is that, uh, whether you're dealing with Hopkins, Sinai University, um, especially talking about the specialty hospitals, meaning trauma centers, STEMI centers, pediatric centers, there are few of them in all the hospitals in Region Three. All of them are on alert at every given point of time. So that adds to this challenge. I'm happy to discuss that, um, at length, but, but I can tell you, we work, we work in lockstep with our hospital partners as well as the state regulatory authority to minimize the offload.
Yeah, but I mean, there's gotta be, there's gotta be consequences and, uh, a way for the city to recoup that. So from what I'm hearing is a hospital is worried about their bottom line, so they short-staff the place. We bear the brunt because we can't just, you know, uh, slow down while we're driving by and push the patient out, right? We gotta wait there until they're handed off to a room or to, uh, to somebody in the, in the ER. So like, so we're now bearing that brunt and the man-hours that goes into that costs us, uh, a lot of money. And so, um, there has to be, um, some type of consequence for, for hospitals um, that, that play, that play that kind of game. And the, despite that, it's also the, the, more importantly is the level of care. And so, uh, the level of care when you're sitting in a, you know, in a hallway of an emergency room, um, that, that's also unfair to the patient. And so, um, I, I think that we do need to explore not going to hospitals that wanna play those games. Now, if they wanna get back on, uh, you know, back, get back in the game, they'll have to make improvements on their end, uh, to do that. Uh, and so, I don't know if that's city legislation, if that would have to be state legislation, um, but there's, there's gotta be a way for us to, uh, to recoup that money to a point where it's not worth it for the hospitals, um, to play those kind of games.
Understood. We, we agree. This is certainly a topic of mutual interest and we are always working with the state on that. Right now, I will say there is no disincentive directly. EMS can bill the hospitals all they want, but the, there's no legislation on the books for that disincentive. Uh, and I can tell you that we, so we have a medical duty officer that monitors this and hospitals don't get the admissions. But again, that's not a disincentive for them because they're not getting paid anyway for the ambulance arrivals under the global budget. So I'm just pointing out that it is a challenging problem without an easy solution, and we will continue to work with the state on the disincentive.
Yeah, so and also, uh, Chief, if you could, uh, provide that data, the, the numbers that you just, uh, gave off. Um, and if we could come up with some, and I'll defer to, to you, um, on, on how often you provide the information. But I think that the council on a, on a regular basis should, should be receiving a list of, of those numbers. Um, I, I personally would like to, to publish those numbers. I think it's important. Because I've also been reading some of these hospitals, uh, reports that they put in, and ironically enough, you know, Sinai Hospital, uh, you know, prides itself on how quickly somebody is seen when they come into the emergency room. And I just couldn't fathom and understand where those numbers came from. Um, and then I, I realized that, um, that short turnaround time was because they, um, assume somebody is seen when you walk into the emergency room and somebody says, "Hello, please fill out this, this clipboard." Um, I don't necessarily consider that being seen. Um, so I, I think that these numbers need to be made public, and I do think that the city needs to take action against hospitals that are so far out, like that are such a far outlier. You're saying it's thirty minutes is, you know, is the memes, um, you know, average? I'm not saying every hospital every week is gonna do that, but if you're, it's supposed to be thirty minutes and they're seventy minutes, um, that's a problem and.
Councilman, um, I wanna make sure I'm getting down your request here. So you're requesting, uh, the, uh, drop-off times from hospital?
The hospital.
Not, not what's on the, on the screen here.
The hospital wait times.
Hospital wait times by hospital is what you're looking for.
Correct.
Okay.
And how often is that data? Is that like?
I get it weekly.
Weekly?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. If you have a distribution list, if you can add me that list?
Sure.
All right.
And then, um, I, I, if I might make a recommendation, Councilman, this sounds like a, an issue that, um, you definitely wanna dig in deeper on, and I, I think it might be helpful for, um, for you, and I'd be more than happy to partake in this, to take a, take this conversation offline and dig deeper. Because I, I mean, I think we're discussing some of the problems here, but there are, I think, incentives for the hospitals that are actually determined at the state level that would have to dramatically change. Um, and I, I think they're having those discussions as we speak. Um, you know, I think everyone struggles with at hospital times across the country, but Maryland is pretty unique in that regard, and it's in part because of the structure that we have with our hospital side. I think it might be helpful to, to have a, a kind of deep dive offline if that's okay with you and certainly with the, with the department.
And, and your point is, is well-taken, Jeremiah Conway, because honestly, I don't know if you're aware, but Maryland ranks dead last in hospital offload around the country. It's a Maryland, is dead last. We're fiftieth in offload.
So if we're fiftieth and, and Sinai is last in, in that, so then they're the last in the coun- the, the longest in the country? Is that what that means?
I can't extrapolate that.
Uh, we'll dive deeper into that later on. Thank you.
All right, so we'll, we'll do a follow-up and, um, more than happy to coordinate with you, um, Councilman. The request is the, um, at-hospital times for all hospitals across the city, um, which I understand Chief Matt's gets weeks, weekly. Uh, and then, uh, we're gonna coordinate a follow-up with the department and Councilman Schleifer, um, on this issue. I think we wanna have a better, well-rounded understanding on some of the factors that are leading to some of the behavior from the hospitals and how it impacts the, the department. Is that clear?
Okay.
Mr. Um, I, Councilman Porter has been waiting patiently. Councilman Porter?
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair. I had a quick question about, um, the duration of unit on-scene time. Is there a national standard by which we have to adhere to, um, for that median time? So we can't wait like two hours or something? Those medics can't be on the scene at two hours. Is that correct?
I'm, I'm confused. There, there is a standard and accepted norm. Obviously, trauma patients, we wanna be on scene fifteen minutes or less. There's, there's all these different times. When you start getting to different types of calls, those standards go up. Somebody's in a cardiac arrest and it's a, it's a unfavorable cardiac arrest, our tours can go twenty minutes or thirty minutes. So that's kind of a variable finish line for you.
What about overdose?
What's that?
What about overdose?
Um, overdose is historically for us range, but they, they run between fifteen to thirty minutes probably is about.
Fifteen to thirty minutes.
No, fifteen to thirty minutes depends if, if somebody, if, if we go and treat someone, they wake up and refuse. You could be talking a shorter term. If they opt to go to the hospital, we take them to the hospital, could be obviously longer.
Okay.
But scene time is usually runs about fifteen to thirty minutes, probably is about a fair norm.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman, you got a question?
Yeah, I was, I was only gonna just beat, beat the dead horse on the, I know, um, this was a SEIU eleven ninety-nine top priority. This is obviously the people who are losing most are the patients. I mean, it's, it's, it's wasting EMS time. It's costing the city. I mean, this is a really, really big deal. And so definitely something for, for us to deep dive into and, and figure out what needs to happen here.
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking forward to, because we, we dug into this issue a lot, um, last term. Uh, it'll be helpful to have new perspectives and ideas as we add, you know, we have new members on the committee, so, um, looking forward to, to doing it more, so. Uh, Chief, please, continue.
Um, Mr. Chair, one thing I wanna just point out in addition to what's been talked about, it's, we have that backwash, what I call backwash time. This, when, when we're in hospitals, we're not responding to calls. So oftentimes, um, you'll get calls, I'll get calls, you know, it took this long, it took that long. There, there are often times that it can be attributed to we're hung up in these hospitals. And that, you know, that's got a cascading effect, right? And to your questions earlier about suppression apparatus being on incident, see how it's, it's, it is by no means is the sole cause, right? But it is a contributing cause.
I'm, I'm glad you, you brought it full circle, Chief. Um, that's one hundred percent right. So if we can solve this problem, it actually helps us with other problems, so.
Okay, I'm gonna go through a couple of quick slides and then I'll let Dr. Lawner, um, take it from here. Um, one of the things that we did in some of those different, uh, methodologies we have and different tools that we're trying to do to try to offload and take down our low acuity call volume, are using different things like alternative destinations. This is our dashboard. The idea, like with the stabilization center, when that started, I think it was in twenty eighteen, was that we would be taking more people there, uh, instead of the, the emergency room. Unfortunately, it's kind of been the opposite. In twenty twenty-three, we took about forty, forty-six people to the stabilization center. They called us in there to take people out of there a hundred and eighty-nine times. In, um, twenty-four, calendar year twenty-four, that number went up to about six times. We took about twenty-two people in there. They called us about six times as many times for us to come and take people out of there. It's, it's, it's a work in progress. We are working on some of those things. Um, the next piece is where I'm gonna transition over to Dr. Lawner and let him talk about, do you have a question?
Sure, yeah. Around the stabilization center, what, what is, what's going on there? Why are we transferring folks out of the stabilization center? And where are we taking them to?
To, unfortunately, it, it has to do with if patients are sick and need to go to the emergency room. It has to go, uh, down with patients can be accepted. They can't exhibit any, you know, they can't be too inebriated to go in there. They can't be fall-down, inebriated. Um, their heart rates have to be within a certain area. Um, there's a lot of different, like, like bumper guards that they put on there. Um, and then the problem unfortunately with EMS is I can take you to, to this.
Can, can we start with what the stabilization, uh, stabiliz- I can't say the word now?
That's okay.
Stabilization center does, uh, how we partner with them?
Mm-hmm.
And then explain, uh, why we're transporting folks from the stabilization center. That'd be really helpful.
Sure, and I'm gonna defer to Dr. Lawner at this point because he was part of the group that actually established that. I was more the, the later part of that before that started. I think they started in about twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, really getting this together. It came to realization about in twenty eighteen. Dr. Lawner, you wanna just give the background on that piece?
Sure. Um, it, these are shared burdens and I, and I, I really, um, I wanna take the opportunity also to give you the detail that you need. So, so let me first say that in, in the spirit of, you know, collegiality and transparency, if you have any questions, feel free to contact me offline. We, we've done a lot of the deep dives on this before and have a lot of the answers. With respect to the stabilization center, that was inceptioned as a twenty-four-hour drop-in unit for twenty-four hours to forty-eight hours of connecting patients to care. So we have very specific guidelines as to how patients can be dropped off there. The challenge, as we all know, and we've spoken about this as well, uh, Mr. Chair, that these patients are quite sick. So when you have patients, they, they also exist at the confluence of various social determinants of health. They don't come with just an overdose problem. They come with alcohol and behavioral health issues. And so what we're seeing is the ones that we bring from an, from the standpoint of an undifferentiated complaint, they may go into acute withdrawal, and that is not necessarily treated. It is medically supervised. So we have seen an overall decrease, I'm proud to say, in the amount of patients we transport out. And what our data also do not reflect are the facts that, uh, there is a significant utilization of the stabilization center from EDs trying to decompress and walk in by police. So the success is not one from EMS because we do transport out, but I wanna echo that they do a fantastic job of temporizing and they do connect a lot of patients to care. We see the ones that fall out because they have infected wounds, for example, or sequelae of hepatitis or other complications of, of substance use disorder.
I see. So, uh, to be very clear and transparent, um, generally, we're taking folks there because of substance use disorder. Um, and the problem that we're having is that they have comorbidities on top of the substance use disorder that makes them unstable and not really able to be fully helped in the stabilization center, meaning we have to move those folks to a hospital. We have to go to an emergency department.
Such as alcohol or behavioral health comorbidities. Absolutely.
Yes, that is.
And we collaborate with them every month.
That's very helpful. Okay. Um, do, and I don't know if we know the answer to this question in this room, but Do, and I don't know if we know the answer to this question in this room, but do we support the stabilization center with any funding? Is there, we don't, we don't support them?
No, I believe they're funded through, through, through a state grant, through BHSB, correct? Yeah, it's funded through a state grant through BHSB.
Yeah, I think it might be helpful for us to have a conversation with folks there and see what we can do to help them. Like clearly that handoff isn't working and I know most people don't take the transport, but in instances where we could help, I mean, that's who we're counting on. So I'm sorry, Chief, that, that's my question. You're welcome to keep moving.
Again, Ben Lawner, Medical Director and Emergency EMS Physician. Thank you for the opportunity. I'm going to provide a very high-level overview of some 911 mitigation strategies. I think it's important, you know, you heard from Director Reddick and, and Chief Matts and Chief Wallace, that our EMS service exists in a, a setting of extreme high utilization. That's due to a, a very high burden of disease, decreased access and decreased literacy of healthcare. So the challenges are, you know, how do we, how do we mitigate 911 calls? Because from a standpoint of being relatively under-resourced, you can basically respond in a little bit, in a, in a way that is a little bit more informed. And we've talked before about the challenges of fire suppression apparatus, 911. So a major focus of our mitigation strategies on this slide is looking at 911 diversion, which isn't necessarily moving people away from 911, it's, it's preventing the call from getting to the dispatch. So we are collaborating with the Baltimore Coalition to end the opioid epidemic. We are working to augment population health. We have a behavioral health diversion program and medically informed dispatch is one of our biggest strategies, which I will go into in terms of some metrics and, and the planning stages in the next slide. On the next slide, this is some of the things that we're already doing. We do have surge units. Tele 911 is also live or a low priority. We'll talk about those metrics. A lower priority call can be connected with an emergency physician. We were first in the state to do that. It does, has limited uptake for a variety of reasons, but that is also active. And I think a big thrust, especially if you look at the particular data as Chief Matts outlined, is how do we take some of the calls at dispatch and prevent them from resulting in an emergency response? And this holds true not only for behavioral health diversion, but also, as you heard from the emergency responses, meaning if we could identify lower acuity and send them to a better resource, that is a major issue for not only us, but also jurisdictions to the South like DC. So you can go to the next slide. This is tele 911. We incepted this on April 1st, no pun intended of last year. And you can see that although it has a role, it is kind of just a tool in the toolbox. And, and the significant thing, so people look at that and they say, well, we've only connected 300 patients, but the, the nuance of this is we were recognized by the state, it's also safe, and if we connect someone, over 60% of those can be resolved with treatment in place and that does not have to deal with any type of transport.
And I'll just add that actually the, the tele 911 program actually received the Mako Award for Innovation for 2024 for Baltimore City. So we were year to year, Dr. Lawner's going to talk about behavioral diversion, but this doing well. And actually as of two days ago, that number was 318. So it's, it's creeping up. It's one of the different tools in the tool shed we have.
Our plan, I would, I would just say for this, this is just some of the things we're doing to have more uptake. The overall goal is to embed the tele 911 into a mobile, into a medically informed dispatch paradigm. So like we talked about, when you call 911 and you heard Director Reddick say that she answers 18 million thousand calls a second, which is impossible for any jurisdiction, the idea is if it meets a certain low acuity determinant, it goes off to a nurse. And that nurse with some degree of medical training can say, you may be appropriate for tele 911, you may be appropriate for a behavioral health diversion, you may be appropriate to a low acuity response. So we are gradually building that infrastructure that is highly complex because quite frankly, the emergency response system is built to send ambulances and suppression units. So, so we are, we are slowly under our leadership trying to move out from that and the diversion programs reflect excellent progress. You can go to the next slide. This just talks about our behavioral health diversion. So we were the first in the state to do this at well. This is where if a call comes into 911 and it meets a previously accepted determinant, so there's no violence, there's no acute medical emergency and we talk about medical complaints. That means bleeding, shortness of breath, breathing problems, stroke or chest pain. We can basically take that call and move it in our partnership. You had mentioned earlier about collaboration. So we work with BCRI and this is where when someone calls 911 and it meets a predetermined sort of classification, we can send it over. This results in decreased police response, increased connection to care. And if you go to the next slide, you can see the impact. Although we would love to see a lot of the percentages of these calls diverted, a lot of them end up having medical complaints. So when the counselors talk to these individuals that are calling 911, a lot of them either want to go to the hospital or they have concurrent complaints of alcohol withdrawal or they have some other medical complaint which would preclude them from being initially diverted. Now, when I first started this, we were over, almost 100% of the calls weren't eligible and we're actually pushing that line to get hopefully at least 50% or above eligible for the diversion. You can go to the next line, which just talks about the impact. So this is again a collaborative with the police, with fire and EMS and our behavioral health authority with the city. You can keep going. We're going to talk about EMS clinical metrics. This is some of the stuff that I know makes me excited. I, I know Chief Matt celebrates along with me in this as well. If you go to the next slide, we track a lot of performance metrics. We review, now again, our jurisdiction is, is again the busiest in the state. So 160,000 EMS incidents and that's just not even counting the responses. We review every cardiac arrest, every endotracheal intubation. We also review every stroke. Now, one of the things this will show you is you can see our metrics. Obviously the top of the line is good. Given the relative lack of resources and the demand, we do struggle with some metrics such as, you know, can we get a specialized EKG to the scene of the emergency within, you know, 10 minutes? That can be a challenge based upon the demand of the system. But I, I want to echo that we utilize these metrics to be not only transparent, but to track improvement and to identify areas of opportunity. Next slide. This is another one. So I, I love this slide for a variety of reasons and I show this at every city council that I can. This shows you that when all links of the cardiac arrest survival chain are in place, Baltimore City does extremely well. So if you have a witnessed arrest and if you have bystander CPR and if our EMTs, paramedics and fire suppression personnel get to the scene of an emergency, you can see the witnessed or the UHTD bystander, that's when all the links of the chain basically come together. We rival other neighboring jurisdictions. And that tells me that we have a lot of work to do on bystander CPR, but it also shows some of the successes of the EMS system. And so we track these metrics every month, every year, and some of the things that we're doing in addition to pulse point, in addition to tele 911 with Director Reddick, in addition to outreach, we are really trying to drive those bystander CPR numbers up so that we can have some comparative success as other jurisdictions. You can go to the next slide. Finally, I want to wrap up and hopefully we can expedite that for you. What are some of the things that we have done very well besides review? We are bringing ultrasound into the field, which will allow our paramedics to make better decisions about when we can terminate the cardiac arrest. CPAP is something to help people breathe and under the leadership here, we have onboarded continuous positive airway pressure. So if you're having trouble taking a breath, that piece of equipment is now going to be on all frontline apparatus. So if there is a paramedic, and I know we talked about shortages, but if there is a paramedic on the fire suppression apparatus or ambulance, we will be able to onboard that life-saving therapy. And I think we continue to struggle with funding for whole blood and that's, that's I know a priority of this jurisdiction. We're also working on a trial of a novel hemostatic agent spray. That's a Baltimore-based company that was recently approved for use in the jurisdiction. And that's essentially a spray-on blood clotting apparatus that will help our patients who are experiencing life-threatening hemorrhage.
Dr. Lawner, would you mind going back one slide?
Yes, sir.
I have a quick question about your favorite slide. So with the UHTD bystander metric, can, can you help me understand?
Yes, sir.
What, cause, and I'm ashamed to have forgotten this, cause you literally say it every time. So how is that, how is that, how's that calculated? Is that the overall?
So when you look at CARES, and again, I appreciate the opportunity to describe this, the CARES is a national database that we participate in. And UHTD bystander is a fancy term for what, what percentage of cardiac arrests survive when all of those things under the UHTD criteria work, meaning the patient has to have a witnessed arrest, there has to be bystander CPR, and then you have to have like early ALS. So of that high-performing cohort, what percentage of those survives? So it's a good measure of a high-performing EMS system.
And then to that end, the box on the bottom talks about CPR versus public AED. So that's of the bystanders who, who did intervene, how many use CPR versus AED?
Yes, the top one is what is our rate? So when you have a witnessed arrest, what is the rate with which bystanders will perform CPR and that is tracked? Now, it's an imperfect metric, but it's tracked by our colleagues over at 911. Baltimore, I know when I started, we were in the high teens. So we are inching up through not only community efforts and various partnerships, but that is a little bit low. Public AED use is also basically any time an AED that is part of the Maryland registry, which is an automated defibrillator is applied and that's tracked also in our CARES registry. That's also another complicated metric.
Got it. And to that end, I'm thinking about, cause one of the discussions we'll have in my colleagues' committee will be about placing the lock zone next to AED, AEDs. This was a state law that was passed last year. I'm, I'm curious if the, these AEDs in this report, this, these are public buildings or where would they have access to the, to AEDs?
So this is, and this is not, it, it doesn't get as granular as which AEDs are utilized, but typically this is whether or not a bystander utilizes this. So if somebody went down, for example, at University of Maryland, not in the hospital in an office building and they reported an AED use, that would be flagged as AED use. So it's when a member of the public, not law enforcement or fire or EMS utilizes an AED.
Got it. Got it. Got it. So it doesn't necessarily tell you where that particular unit was?
No, sir.
Got it. Okay. Thank you. Councilman Porter.
Thanks so much. I want to, I have two questions. One related to, you mentioned the whole blood. Where are we in that, where are we in that process?
So I'm going to defer to Chief Matts and Chief Wallace in terms of the funding. I can tell you that we have been participating with various jurisdictions. So we've done the feasibility study. We've looked at where the, where the trauma is. We've looked at the logistics. So we are part of the whole blood consortium, which is a kind of a regional issue, but we have not deployed that due to, I know, funding.
And the reason why I bring that up is because I knew the funding from the previous year was stripped away. And so have we found a stopgap for any type of funding for continuation of that pilot?
Not at this time, ma'am, we have not.
Okay. My second question actually has to deal with, do you all do any toxicology analysis on EMT or paramedic once you come on the scene?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you so much. Simple question, simple answer. Thank you.
Oh, no, of course. And I would mention that Sinai has, is leading the way with being a regional blood bank. I don't work there, but they're working with Baltimore County and others to be a regional blood bank for Inova to supply for Baltimore County and Howard. Just to lighten things up.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Timothy Cullen, Deputy Chief of EMS Administration. I'll be reviewing the next two programs that I'm responsible for. Before we move through the slide, I'll just give you a brief overview of the chase car pilot program because it is new to the city and not familiar to everybody. April 22nd of 2024, we implemented a chase car pilot program or ALS, which is Advanced Life Support Upgrade Unit. This is a non-transport unit operational seven days a week, part-time during the peak hours of 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Stayed by two paramedics, which is our highest level of care. The purpose of the unit is to deliver rapid ALS emergency treatment and care to patients and also giving us the versatility and capability to increase the level of care of our basic life supporter BLS units by upgrading them when there's a need for advanced level of care transport. So the unit's equipped with two full complements of medications, cardiac monitors, patient care equipment, giving us the ability to have two additional ALS teams on this one unit that you see in the picture. And they can be split and deployed on multiple responses at a time. Next slide, please. So this slide just gives you a basic overview of call data since April, April, April 22nd. As of yesterday, they've responded to over 2,100 incidents. That medium response time shows that we're getting ALS care to patients rapidly with seven minutes and 50 seconds. The top 10 call types section, you can see there are top three reasons are respiratory distress, non-breathing and unconscious patients. And then with that, the, the biggest area I'd like to highlight is incidents by acuity level. So 87.7% of the incidents that they respond to are to a higher acuity, acuity level of calls. So that's showing that we're getting advanced life support to those critical patients who need it. So those are life, life-threatening, kind of monitor, moderate to severely ill patients who require a higher level of treatment, of care, treatment and care. So again, this is a pilot program. It has shown proof of concept, success so far. The data in the slides reflects that as well. And we've kind of successfully built the platform for future implementation. Next slide.
If I can just clarify here, so this is just, this is an ALS unit that doesn't have the ability to transport? Is that the way?
Correct. We upgrade, we jump on our other units or we assist some of the, the suppression units that are on scene who might not have a paramedic or ALS provider onboard. We can drop off on the scene and assist them.
So, so what I'm, what this is, is what I was talking about earlier. We have to be more nimble. We have to look at what we're given. We have to analyze our data. What does that mean? We don't have enough paramedics. What do we do? We put all our paramedics together. So they'd say there's three units there, the three of us can upgrade one, two, three people that need to have that higher level of care. We did a pilot, it's been very successful. That's what I mean about, we have to change with what it's given us and that's one of those programs that's had a lot of success.
And for members that may not be familiar with the terminology, we, we're talking about advanced level service versus basic level service. You'll see ALS, BLS a lot of times in these reports, but specifically ALS has a paramedic on it, which is a difference.
Correct. The basic life supporters are EMT, your more invasive procedures, your cardiac arrest, your shootings, you're really where you need the highest level of care and medicines, that's where you want your paramedics. In this program, we put a couple of ALS people together so they could upgrade otherwise BLS units that we have are basic life support units to the advanced life support level, providing better care, better patient outcomes. Dr. Lawner loves it. Those are the paramedics that have the highest level of training. They could be used for everything from ultrasound like Dr. Lawner was just talking about to whole blood, their rescue task force trained, which means if we have an active assailant, they're the people that you want there.
This is great. Thank you.
Councilman, this, this is also a program where, a, as you know, we've given you numbers today, call volume and the ratio of call volume to actual ALS calls, right? It's disproportionate, it's very low. This, this is a way where we can pull those paramedics back from those calls where they're not needed, right? But yet they remain committed because they, they've legally engaged a patient. This pulls them back and it gives us the versatility to really strategically move them around the city to where they're needed the most.
Brilliant.
It's, for as much as it's used, we like that, but we also show where it's not needed. And that's, that is very key to our providers. And you know, the burnout rate and could be some of the attrition, we're trying to pull our providers back from where they're not needed.
Got it. And right now we have one unit.
Correct. Yes, sir.
Okay.
And one very brief point about this. And one very brief point about this. If you look at Chief Cullen's slide, you can see this also shows the EMS system using data to change outcomes. So we talked about the massive amount of calls. And this shows that we're able to accurately triage a high acuity determinant with a high acuity response. This shows a nice synergy between Director Reddick's shop and also Operational EMS.
Thank you, Councilman. You have a question?
So that last statement might have answered my question, but I didn't understand what you said. So it might not have. Just to understand it, so the, so a BLS capable unit is going to a scene. And then if it turns out that an ALS capability is needed, then you're reinforcing with the chase car. That's the process?
Correct. And if you have a two-person vehicle, that vehicle will arrive. They can drop a paramedic and now that BLS unit has now become an ALS unit. The paramedic jumps on with their gear. They go into the hospital. The advantage on the backend is that chase car goes back in service again. So if that happens somewhere else, they go there, they upgrade the unit. And then at that point, really, the only struggle is to get the vehicle back with the providers. But we have provided the right care at the right time.
So the focus here is to get the paramedics to this place where it's not equipment, it's the paramedics themselves?
Well, it's both. They carry, essentially, everything is carried in that vehicle with, absent of transport capabilities. So they don't have stretchers. They have cardiac monitors. They have drug bags. They have all their innovative skills. Everything is there. We have to put them in the right places, you know, at the right time when they're needed. But the other thing it does is it keeps them away from situations where these very low acuity calls, they're not needed. So what we've done is changed the focus. We want to put the right resources right at the right time.
Yeah, yeah, that seems like a, y'all should do a lot more of that. Yeah, that's awesome.
Great work.
All right, the next section is about our population health, community paramedic program. Our primary purpose is harm reduction, functioning as a mobile resource unit that connects patients to care and resources on-site in real time. With this, we have the ability to reach all areas of the city. We respond to emergency incidents, visit areas of suspected substance use, attempt to assist our 911 high utilizers, and outreach patients on the street or in their homes. This capability makes us unique in what we do. Our specialty is reaching those areas and incidents that other programs may not be able to. Next slide, please. So these numbers are cumulative totals from the program's start, which was up until the end of 2024. So just to go over a few things, we have, in 349 operational days, we provided outreach to over 497 911 patients for calls for suspected substance use and 12,966 family members, bystanders, members of the community who were either directly or indirectly involved in calls involving some type of suspected substance use. I always like to point that out because that's a significant number. Next slide, please. And then as a mobile resource unit, we provide real-time connections to resources. All training and referrals we provide are customized based on the incident or patient needs. There's no direct pathway to follow. Every situation is different, which is challenging for us. This slide kind of reflects some of those efforts. Population health awareness, just to go over what that is. That's our on-the-scene, usually on the street, real-time post-incident awareness training. That's where we distribute our leave-behind naloxone kits, resources, and information about incidents that we are on, test strips. Our total's there. Our outside agency referrals, so this includes referrals for anything from shelters to food resources, to primary healthcare, to clinics, to outpatient substance use and treatment programs. We also work very closely with the Health Department's Healthcare on the Spot Mobile Program. And then, this is an old, not updated slide. I did want to mention long-term treatment. We've assisted 13 patients directly into inpatient treatment for substance use. This is a significant number, 13 over that time of less than two years. So it's not easy to build relationships, gain trust, and support of a patient to the point where they accept treatment and allow us to help facilitate that process in getting them admitted to care. Of that 13, five, just an update, five continue to use. Three are still in treatment and five no longer use and have not used since. And that dates back to October of 2023. Next slide, please. And then our most impactful initiative is our leave-behind Narcan program. This number, as of yesterday, is over 13,000 kits, 26,000 doses given out by this unit. These kits and training on how to use them is being distributed in areas of active or recent suspected overdose use. Given, they're given to our suspected overdose patients, their families, bystanders, who are connected to either directly or indirectly to a suspected opioid use incident. We can hand it out freely. We do have parameters of what we give it out to, but that's a significant number. To the point earlier, this information is reported out monthly to the Maryland Department of Health, who shares it with the Health Department. And also to the other question, we do share our EMS calls for suspected overdose on a daily basis to the Police Department and the Health Department. So those numbers are shared with our fellow agencies. And the last slide. So this slide gives an update on BCFT's buprenorphine program. So we did implement that program on 9/30/2024. We're one of three Maryland jurisdictions that implement an MIH buprenorphine program. We did this through a collaboration with Baltimore City Health Department's Healthcare on the Spot and University of Maryland's Addiction and Treatment Center. Some of the barriers to induction, we listed on there. It's a little more challenging than we thought it would be when we started. Patients did not meet capacity to consent. A lot of our patients are acutely ill with that and we do have to transport to the hospital. There is criteria for induction. Polysubstance abuse is a big one, too. A lot of patients are on more than just one opiate or one drug. And that is a contraindication stigma. And a lot of them are already enrolled in another treatment program. So we do communicate that with them.
So this goes back to, and I've got a couple more slides, I promise, and I'm done, I'm talking. But this just goes that step further to explain that we really analyze what we're doing, where we're doing it. In this slide, this is just a breakdown of our opioid overdose reductions year-over-year by district. I think our largest district was, I think it was District 2, if I looked right, was our biggest reduction at 67% year-over-year. And really, I think this is the biggest takeaway from the Population Health Initiative that Chief Cullen oversees, is that year-over-year, we've had a 29% reduction in overdoses. Now, look, I'm going to say this again, like I've said for the last couple of years. That does not mean that people are not overdosing. We're leaving behind so that people can take care of each other, so that we're not having overdose fatality. It's a lot easier to treat those and a lot of times, these people are treating themselves and we never see them. But impacted a system, that's a significant decrease, a 29% increase. And then just to close out, just one last little slide. We do do a really deep dive in to look at, you know, what are the hours of the day, days of the week, months of the year? I'm happy to report that across all months of the year-over-year, we've noticed a reduction. There's been a reduction in all council districts. Whereas in 2023, most of our overdoses occur between like 3:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. We're noticing this year it shifted more to like an 11 to 1 o'clock type area. But we look at the days of the week. Honestly, that varies from report to report. Some days, Wednesdays are big days. Some days, it's weekends. But all this data feeds our responses in the end.
I'm curious what you guys believe is behind the reduction in overdoses. I think you touched on part of it with the Population Health Team and the distribution that they're doing. And to your point, that may not necessarily mean that people aren't overdosing, but they're not calling us to respond because they can help each other immediately. Do you have any other insights on, because I know we have one Population Health Team. They can't be everywhere, although they are truly amazing. I think we need like four of those. But do you have any other sense of what changed in the last year that has led to a reduction in overdoses?
I'll defer to Chief Cullen for a minute from his insight from the team, and then I'll talk about myself. Go ahead, Chief Cullen.
No, I actually wish I had an answer for that. I mean, the reality of it, too, is we're not getting the calls. So by the time we do get there, the way that we report out and measure this is by positive responses in the lock zone. So if they're already getting the lock zone before we get there, we can't really measure if it's happening or not. Also, with some of the things with the polysubstance use, the lock zone won't affect things like xylazine and things like that, so we can't really measure that. I like to hope that it's the efforts that the city's putting out, Health Department's putting out in ourselves, but I don't have data to back that up.
Sure.
Yeah, I would certainly agree with my colleague here. This is a very difficult question. I will say that this parallels a national trend in a decrease in overdose. And I will say that although I don't have the hard data to back it up, I think the scrutiny and the amount of resources that are leveraged to deal with the opioid epidemic, specifically all of the opioid restitution and also the growth of community programs, I think has a positive impact as well. I think there's a lot of penetrance of low barrier induction and medication-assisted programs. So I like to think that that parallels a negative trend.
Yes, Councilwoman.
Thank you. I just want to follow up on that statement. Those low induction medication-assisted programs, could you provide some examples of those?
Sure. So some of the things that are happening now, buprenorphine is just one aspect, but I should say low barrier, meaning that anybody can get it at any time. And I think that's a challenge. So if you look at what's happening at our own hospital system, there's the 24-hour connection and availability of peers so that we can connect people just in time at the point of the emergency. So I was referring to the fact that there is increased availability of both drop-in at the stabilization center, for example, and also at emergency departments, which historically, to be fair, has not been sort of the function of a lot of EDs. Now, I know in the past month, we have been doing that, but even just the University of Maryland Medical System has an overall protocol for that. So that's what I meant by the increased availability.
And when you talk about that availability, I'm assuming you mean increased operations, funding, just overall care coordination network that would need to be expanded system-wide to account for a lot of these issues?
Yes, ma'am. I don't think I could have said that better myself. And one of the buprenorphine articles, it talks about how all of these things exist within an environment of care. And there's so much work to be done in terms of when you find people off-hours and in the street. So in parallel with what's going on in the hospitals, there's also a lot of pre-hospital discussion about how to coordinate care. And that is a significant focus on the ARPA B Corp discussions about how do we collect the data and interconnect people at the time of overdose? So I would 100% agree.
Any other questions? Please, Councilwoman Ramos.
I have questions, not on this subject, because I missed a couple of...
You cannot ask, I'm kidding, you can ask your question.
Just wanted to make sure we were done with this conversation before I ask my questions.
We'll be talking about this for a while.
Sure.
You can ask your question.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I apologize to the committee and to the Fire Department. I had to leave for a little bit. So if this was covered, just tell me to, I'll just take it offline. But I wanted to go back to the stats under suppression relative to the vacant properties and looking at the, a couple of different things. One was the injuries are still kind of high for where we are with the comparison. So it's like, I just wrote it down and couldn't find the slide. So in terms of injuries from vacant properties, and injuries could be anything from, you know, I realize that there is a range of what injuries are. It's 39% of the injuries were in vacant properties or Codex properties in 2023. And then that went down to 30% roughly in 2024, if I did my math correctly. And then we're still up around 30% in 2023. And 2024, we're down a little bit in terms of fires in vacant properties. You know, obviously, that's worrisome because we don't want any firefighter injured. But we're still, you know, seeing a lot of, you know, almost a third of our fires, our vacant property fires. And I appreciated seeing in the slides that you're doing some work around people not being in those properties and making sure that people can call 311, et cetera, et cetera. But then I also saw the slide around some of the, and there's not numbers on the slide, so I can't tell you which one it is. But it's the one that talks about vacant and Codex re-inspections. So going back to my question, it says, you know, you go look and see and look at the Codex. I know that Codex properties are less than the VBN properties, just because I don't know how well the lists are connected. So then when you go out and re-inspect them, you're saying that 68 of them have been vacant, have been demolished, right? And is that because you all have said to DHCD, hey, this is like super unsafe and you need to raise it? Or I'm just wondering what the collaboration is with DHCD? Or is it like it burned, like what happened in my district, except that those weren't previously vacant properties? So I'm just trying to figure out if you, basically, your crews are saying this is like super dangerous and you need to get this down? Or it's just a function of that they have already put that in motion to be able to bring the property down?
So I'll start. I'm going to answer briefly. I think Chief, I can probably give you a much better answer. I can tell you from personal experience, when I've asked HCD to get these buildings down, especially at a time in which they're burning, they seem to get them down. We've, I can say that I just asked for two to come down last week, and I got pictures today. They're down.
Okay.
There are two structures that were very sensitive to this fire department. We were having problems there with illegal occupancy. And when I spoke to the commissioner, they were down. I mean, she was very receptive to me that night. The following morning, she was herself
That's good.
on the ground there and emailed me in the afternoon and basically said, done. So my experiences have been very favorable. However, I'll just caveat that by saying they're also limited because I'm not always on the fire ground. So I'll defer to Chief.
Sure. I know they got them down super quickly when there's an actual fire. But if there's one, like you just said, where there's, you know, you've been having challenges with it, I want to just make sure that there is that collaboration there.
Yeah, I totally agree with Chief Wallace. When we ask, they're responsive.
Great, okay, good to know.
But we don't ask for a lot that don't involve fires either. So when we do the re-inspections, those numbers are indicative of vacancies and Codex rate combined
Right.
based off of, you know, housing data. So they are moving forward, obviously, because we haven't asked them to raise 67. So there must be some, and I thank the council and the mayor and the different agencies for working towards this because it really helps me sleep at night when I know we're not going in there.
Oh, yeah. I mean, there is a strategy around it. I was just curious if, you know, again, if you're saying this one has to come down and they're making it come down, and that's a good thing. So that's good. And then the 179 returned to use, those have use and occupancy permits, so they're not vacant properties anymore? Is that what that is?
I can't speak to return to use and whether they have you or no. I don't know.
So where does this number coming from?
That just is a reinspection where they have done construction and got it to, but we don't follow up through the fire marshal's offices or just the suppression units doing inspections, saying, yes, they are safe for firefighting, which we consider normal use. But I don't know about, we don't...
Okay, so you don't know whether these 179 have been properly rehabbed in terms of like gotten a use and occupancy permit, meaning that they're, you know, safe structures? You're just seeing that it's no longer the way that it was when you initially inspected?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Could I have those addresses so that I can take a look at, you know, what's going on with those properties? I mean, it's not a bad thing. I think it's good that they're being returned to use. I'm just curious.
Yeah, and we could get our IT department to send them. And it is some concern to us, too. If you think about it, how they're being returned to use, what type of materials we're using. We look at lightweight construction down in the peninsula. And we're almost thinking that we are going to remain these somewhat tagged in our CAD system, just to let our incident commanders know that, hey, this once was a vacant or a Codex. And we should still have some concerns about fire impingement on the structure itself as it burns longer.
Yeah. No, and I agree with that because we are still seeing instances of people rehabbing properties without the proper permit. So we don't know whether they're actually, you know, have the use and occupancy. That's why I want to see what's going on there. And we just made changes to the building code. We can do that again. But if they're not using permits to do the rehab, then, you know, that's a problem. So, yeah, I'm curious about this number and to try to make sure that, and in CodeMap, the data that we get, you know, we can tell what's been recently rehabbed. So if it has a proper use and occupancy permit on it, it turns from, you know, the red square to the blue square. So I'm just curious about those in that way we can just really see what's really happening here as well.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Councilwoman, I want to make sure we get your request down specifically. Can you state it one more time?
Sure. I'm looking at this slide. I don't have a number on my page, but I will figure it out. It has Codex times address inspections, and it's got vacant and Codex re-inspections in 2024. 68 properties were raised and 179 were visually returned to use. And I'm curious what those 179 are. And that way, we can dig a little deeper as to what's happening with those properties. And hopefully, everything is good. They've got use and occupancies and we're good. But I'd like to take a look at that.
Okay, I think we got that. Councilwoman Blanchard.
Yep, question regarding Fire Marshal's Office. Could you speak towards just staffing and funding of the office? Do we feel that the current levels that were at staffing-wise and everything, does that present a challenge or a bottleneck? Or is that adequate or that type of thing?
So I took over as Fire Marshal on July 31st of 2024, and we were short inspectors. Since then, we have promoted three inspectors and hired one civilian contractor for plans. We would like to do more, but again, we have to revisit the budget and what that'll look like. My goal would be to double that, but again, it just depends on the funding.
And so the goal would be to double from the four additional to an eight additional?
Correct, because actually, I think in the next, is it 30 days, we're going to do a promotional exam, lieutenant and captain inside of the division, which would again open up some more spots to get fire inspectors in those positions.
Okay. And what's the total number of folks in the Fire Marshal's Office?
It's around 70.
70?
70.
Okay.
And that includes officers. And like I said, at this time, we have one private contractor. That includes officers, and like I said, at this time, we have one private contractor that works two days a week.
Okay.
And he's just in plans.
Okay.
Thank you. Any further questions? Hearing none, seeing none. I want to thank you guys, as always, for being incredibly prepared and being incredibly thorough and also focusing on the data and helping us and all the new members of the committee navigate this. Looking forward to working with you through this term, and this hearing is in recess.